Amherst Media, are you ready? Thank you. I want to note that we have press in the audience with us tonight. This is the first meeting of the Town Council in which we have remote participation. So I'm just going to go over a little bit about what that means, okay? Both Councillor Schoen and Councillor Baumeln have petitioned and received permission to participate in this manner because it was unreasonable for them to be here. This is permissible under 940 CMR 29.10.5. The information shall be recorded in the minutes. And I will now be checking with each of them to make sure that they can hear, et cetera, and they will need to go off of mute and respond. So first of all, Kathy, let the record reflect that board committee member, in this case, the Town Council member, Kathy Schoen, is attending remotely via speakerphone for the meeting on January 7th, 2019, for the reason stated above. Councillor Schoen, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I just want to ask if you'll speak up just a little louder when you talk.
Yes, I can.
Okay. Okay. Let the record reflect that Councillor Kathy Schoen's attendance via speakerphone can be heard by all present at the meeting. If you're very quiet. Okay. Councillor Baumeln. First of all, let the record reflect that Councilmember Shalini Baumeln is attending remotely via speakerphone for a meeting on January 7th, 2019, for the reasons stated above. Shalini, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Okay, we're going to ask you to speak up as we do this, okay? Let the record reflect that Councillor Baumeln's attendance via speakerphone can be heard by all present at the meeting. So because we have remote participation, all votes taken during the meeting with a remote participation shall be by roll call vote. Therefore, all votes, the President or the Town Clerk will ask for the individual vote. In this case, we ask the Town Clerk to do that. I'm sorry, Mandy?
We should check to make sure Kathy can hear Shalini and Shalini can hear Kathy when they speak.
Thank you. Kathy, can you hear Shalini?
Yes, I can.
Shalini, can you hear Kathy?
Yes, very clearly.
Okay, thank you very much. "If technical difficulties arise as a result of utilizing remote participation, the President will -- should supersede or should suspend discussion while reasonable efforts are made to correct the problem. If remote participation is disconnected, that fact and time of disconnection, and if subsequent reconnection is achieved, shall be noted in the meeting minutes." I have asked each councillor in advance, who is participating by remote, to provide us agenda items in general that they would like to speak to. They have done so, and Councillor Hanigey will indicate that the councillor participating remotely wishes to speak. So if you see Councillor Hanigey going, "This, this," are jumping up and down, it's because she's representing three people tonight. Not representing, but she is making sure that three people are heard tonight. Remote councillors are asked to speak by stating their name, and we would like them to continue to go by our general rules of not adding -- only adding to conversations, not repeating. Seeing that we have a quorum, I want to call the meeting to order. It is now 6:34. So welcome. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by Amherst Media. Copies of the agenda are projected up on the screen, both in front and in back. And if you are interested in speaking, we ask that you sign in in the sheet at the front door. Are there any announcements by members of the council or the town manager? Okay? I just want to mention two things real quickly. The Rules of Procedure, Ad Hoc Committee, has asked that we try a different form of addressing councillors during this meeting. I have been asked to address councillors by their first name, and I am asking councillors to address me by Lynn. So we're going to try it, okay? And we also wish to thank the League Women Voters, Amherst Media, and Stan Rosenberg for creating and hosting Byline with Stan Rosenberg. The first edition of each of the shows can be seen on Friday nights at 8 o'clock and then on Monday nights at 6 o'clock. There are no resolutions, however, I just want to mention, because we are expecting one, and several people are aware of it, that the resolution and support of full funding for our public schools will be a topic at our January 28th, 2019 meeting, when a representative from the School Committee will be present. No hearings, so we will proceed to presentations and discussions. So, we have three presentations and discussions this evening. The first is going to be with Councillor Bachman -- excuse me, Manager Bachman, and his staff. And then we are going to proceed with an agenda item on the Station Road Bridge, and then on the Energy and Climate Resilience Committee proposal. We will also have public comment toward the end of the agenda for residents who wish to speak on a different issue other than these two items. So in other words, there will be different times. While our Town Charter requires a public comment period at every public meeting, the council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during the public comment. If your comment specifically relates to an item later on our agenda, please bring that comment forward after the council has reached that item on the agenda and stated their own position and/or observations. The format for discussion when we get to that point will be as follows. The item will be introduced by the President. The President will call on the person's making formal presentations, whether they are members of the council or town employees. This order has been predetermined. All council members will have an opportunity to speak and ask questions about the issue. As appropriate, the town manager or other town employees will respond to those questions. Only after the council has completed their discussion will the President ask for a show of hands of people who would like to be recognized to speak about the topic presently on the table. Depending on the number of people, we will limit that to two to three minutes, and if you go over, I reserve the right to ask you to cut it short. Finally, when making comment, please advance to the desk. We now have our staff and Manager Bachman with us. Push the button on the mic. Identify yourself and where you live, and then proceed with your comments. The first item for which there will be no public comment is the Community Participation Officers, and I'm calling on Manager Bachman.
Thank you, most esteemed and honorable President. We good?
That's okay.
Most esteemed and honorable President, which is what you told me to call you when we first started.
No, I did not. I did not.
But we'll go back to Lynn.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, Section 3.3D of the Home Rule Charter calls for the manager to appoint a Community Participation Officer. The purpose of this role is to increase participation in local government by diverse residents, as described in Section 3.3C, and says such officer may be a current employee. So really, what the Community Participation Officer is designed to do is provide support for individuals interested in being involved in local government, devise and implement strategies to enhance public engagement, conduct community outreach efforts to increase participation by underrepresented residents, aid in planning and conducting the district meetings, analyze data on resident engagement, regularly submit reports to the town manager and the town council, and carry out any other duties designated by the town manager. So as I thought about this, it seemed like that was a lot of work for one person, and that we would be highly benefited by having a team of people that would take on this task, for a couple of reasons. One, a team of people brings a much broader set of relationships and experiences to the table, and it also taps into the talents that they have already established. So specifically, I've assigned this job of Community Participation Officer Team to three individuals who are already employed by the town. Angela Mills is the Executive Assistant to the Town Manager. Jen Moyston is the Administrative Assistant in our office, and Brianna Sunrid is the Communications Manager for the town. These three employees have a wide range of experience. They all have children in this public school district. They're involved -- many of their children are involved in sports, and I think these types of attributes are the things that are going to help engage the community. So what I wanted to do tonight is -- you've read my memo, so I don't have to reiterate that, which I just did, is have each of them say a few words about themselves, so that the public gets to meet them, so you get to meet them, and we start this engagement process. The other thing I want to mention is on Friday, we do a normal coffee, cup of joe thing, on Friday from 7:30 to 9:00. This week, I'll be joined by some, if not all, of our officers here to help engage the public, and it'll be held at Starbucks. So first, just pass it down. Lower starting.
My name's Angela Mills. I'm honored to be here. I have lived in Amherst on and off since 1991. I am a 1995 graduate of Amherst College. I've enjoyed all of my volunteer efforts for our town, most recently as a youth sport coach in volleyball, basketball, and baseball. I'm on the Board for Amherst Baseball. I was the co-chair of the Cargraff Farm PGO for three years, and I also served on the LSSC Commission. So I come to the Community Participation Officer job with an open heart and also a great enthusiasm to work with my colleagues. I did learn Spanish before I learned English at home. My parents immigrated to the U.S. in '68, so Spanish was my first language, and I think that would be a great way to kind of reach out to newer parts of our community. I'm also really interested in the growing senior population that we have. I think they're a great untapped resource, and I know it's a burgeoning population, so I look forward to working with them. And then as we started to brainstorm, I really thought families with very young children, some of those families stick around and raise their children for all of their schooling years here in our town, and other families come and go due to the colleges and the university, but I think everybody should share the talents that they have during their time here. So I look forward to working with you and finding new space to meet with your constituents, and thanks for having us.
And yes, my name is Jennifer Moyston, and as the Town Manager told you, I am the Administrative Assistant for the Town Manager's Office. I'm also a Human Resources Assistant. I grew up here in Amherst, and I'm currently raising my children here as well. My community involvement right now consists of coaching football, basketball, and I'm also a board member of the Amherst Survival Center. What excites me most about becoming a Community Participation Officer is connecting with people and the residents. I'm a very people person. I love working with people. Enhancing the opportunity for public involvement and diversifying our boards and committees. So prior to working for the town, I didn't know the impact that the boards and committees have on the decision-making of the town. And so there are many people, residents and folks out there, who have great ideas and just don't know exactly how to get those or who to bring those ideas to. So I'm very excited about being able to be a gateway or opening up a gateway for those people to become involved and diversifying it so that our boards and committees and hopefully employment are more of a reflection of what is -- of who lives in our community as well.
Hello, councillors. Thank you for having us. My name is Brianna Sunrid, and as the Town Manager said, I'm the recently Communications Manager for the town. I work in the IT Department. I've lived in Amherst since 2003, when I came here for undergraduate at UMass Amherst. And Amherst actually got me my start in local government. I worked for LSSC as a senior, and it really changed how I wanted -- what career I wanted to go into. So I thank Amherst for that, and I was lucky enough to come back here after doing -- working for nearly three years for the city of Worcester in a similar capacity. I was actually their first public outreach coordinator, a very large, diverse city of over 185,000 residents, and we were able to create brand-new programming there, which my experience with that, I'm really excited to bring some of those elements to Amherst. Some of the things that we're doing now in Amherst, we're trying to create those avenues of access to participate in town government and utilize our services better. We have a couple of things on the horizon, a website redesign, trying to find different ways to engage with local students through civics. I'm actually currently a part-time graduate student at the University of Massachusetts in Public Policy, where my focus is on digital governance, so we get to utilize some of those things that I'm learning at the university here as well. And we actually will be having an independent study graduate student aiding us in community participation work this spring semester. We're really excited about that. Our chief goal, just jumping off of what Jennifer and Angela said, is to make the town of Amherst approachable and accessible and inclusive to our diverse community. So we're excited to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Yes, Darcy.
I'm just interested to know how you're dividing up the responsibilities. I'd like to know who to call about what.
Do you want to speak to that, or should I?
Well, you should if you know.
It's early days, so we've just started to coordinate weekly meetings, so it hasn't been completely ironed out yet, but we will have an email that reaches all three of us, as well as a phone number. From the big-picture standpoint, technology, website-wise, that's kind of more -- will be in my wheelhouse, so I can at least speak to that. But we are working on more clearly defining those, and if you ladies have anything to add, feel free.
Jennifer and I can help with space for your meetings, and if you have great ideas about constituencies that we can help you with, I think Brianna, I think the three of us are ready to handle that task.
Are there questions or comments? Mandy Jo.
Shalini, would like to speak.
This is Shalini Rahel-Mellon. I was just thinking about answering Darcy's question. We have an email that was sent to us, Get Involved, which apparently is the email we'll send if we want to reach any of our community officers. Just pointing that out.
I could not hear that.
Okay, I'll try to speak up. Is that better?
A little bit.
Hello, can you hear me? Should I just type my response?
She just asked whether she should type it.
I was -- can you try to say it again, very loud? I think we can sort of hear you.
Okay, I was just referring to the email we were sent to reach the three communication officers. The email was Get Involved.
Yeah.
If you could repeat that.
So, Shalini, I'll repeat what I think we heard, referencing the memo from Paul dated December 29th, where to facilitate contact, we've established an email address that will reach all three officers. This email address is getinvolved@amherstm.gov. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, Dorothy.
If one were having a community forum and wanted to do a Facebook event kind of page, is that something you would help with, or should we go to the IT Department?
So the good thing, again, Brianna Sunrid, the good thing is I am part of the IT Department, so by going through us, you kind of get that service as well. So you would coordinate with the Community Participation Officers, and if there's expertise we need to borrow from another department, we'll do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Yes. Pat.
I'm interested in finding out what you think keeps people from participating in our town government. And also, when I was in Boston, I led a parent leadership team, and we had translators when we were in different communities. So here we have a Spanish translator. Are there other -- will there be other opportunities, if necessary, to have a Cambodian translator or things like that?
Thank you. We could certainly look into that. Having done that previously, it depends on the meeting and the population, because if you are hiring people, it gets very expensive very quickly, and while the goal would be to have multiple translations at any meeting, that's kind of a hard bar to achieve.
Are there other questions or comments? Yes, Pat.
I asked what they thought kept people from engaging in town now.
Thank you.
So we haven't made an exhaustive list of barriers to entry, but it is something that we've been thinking a lot about, and we've identified a number of things that we feel are potential barriers to entry for participation, and I think that's our chief task. And I believe Angela --
Had something to add. Angela Mills, so we actually brainstormed this a little bit today, and in terms of cross-pollination, it would be an undue burden for us to go to an organization that has volunteers and say, "Hey, we're looking for volunteers for all of these commissions and committees." So that is really the crux of our challenge, and it's a big boat, but we're happy to row it with you. So we are brainstorming that.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Seeing that, then let me just say, Angela, Jennifer, and Brianna, thank you very much. We really look forward to working with you, and as I think you know, we have already set up our own committee, which is dealing with communication, outreach, and committee appointments, and we will want you to be working closely with that committee, as well as all of us as councillors. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Station Road Bridge replacement, and this is an item being introduced by the -- to the council, by the town, and there will be a period of public comment at the end of this particular part of the agenda. Mr. Bachman.
Thank you, Lynn. I'm here with Superintendent Public Works Guilford Mouring, and he will be doing the major presentation, and while he sets that up, I'll give you a little background on this. So on September 20th, 2018, the Department of Public Works, in consultation with the Mass Department Transportation Bridge Team, Bridge Inspection Team, determined that the condition of Station Road Bridge was unsafe and closed the bridge to vehicular traffic. I am requesting an appropriation of $332,800. $162,800 would fund the engineering work that has been contracted to move the permitting and construction for both a temporary bridge and a permanent bridge forward. Roughly $170,000 would fund the construction and installation of a temporary bridge. Those funds would be appropriated from the town's road repair -- to the town's road repair account that is used to pave town roads and sidewalks. Additional funds, we're estimating this very early stage, of about $1.2 million, will be required to construct a permanent bridge if state funding is not forthcoming. In the memo in your packet, we discussed some of the alternatives, give a detailed background of the history of the bridge, which Mr. Mouring can give a little more -- go into a little more depth if you choose. In terms of public outreach, we had a -- two public meetings, one on October 30th at the Fort River Elementary School, and one on December 19th at the Banks Community Center. Both were very well attended by residents and people just concerned, and we have continued to -- we have established a webpage on the town's website to keep -- to maintain a communication with the public. The way we're looking at this is the key issue for the Town Council is two. One is you are the keepers of the public way, so what happens in the public way, which is a bridge is a public way, is really under your jurisdiction. The other is we need money to move this project forward. We have allocated some funds from an existing account that is usually dedicated to road and sidewalk paving, because there was an urgency to move this project forward in our -- in my estimation. But we are also asking for an appropriation of funds. What my request is to the council tonight is that it gets referred to your Finance Committee, so we can go a little more in-depth about the funding options and things like that. And if you're ready? But this is not showing. There we go.
So good evening, Madam President, council members. I've always wanted to say that, sorry. I only have a couple of things I've never said, and I'll try to work that in sometime in my life, I hope. So this is an update that the CDM, our camp dresser, McGee Smith, our consulting engineer, has provided to us, and it's just a quick overview of what's going on. I'm sorry I didn't come play with this computer before, but it's not kind of doing the same thing my computer was doing with the presentation. So this is the bridge. Project need, basically, as Mr. Bachman said, on the 20th, we kind of went out there and decided we needed to close the bridge. The Mass DOT Inspector, who was standing on the bridge when a car drove across it and hopped him, he agreed quite quickly that we needed to close the bridge and concurred with our findings. You can see, there's a lot of corrosion on the bottom of the stringers. That's the part that's failing at this point. What's been done so far is just kind of a list of all the things we've done. We haven't been just waiting to see what was going to happen next. We have been working pretty diligently. The biggest things we have done is we have submitted an application to the Mass DOT for their small bridge municipal program, which is to get money from the state to actually replace the bridge. The only issue with that amount of money is, is that's a reimbursement account, and you get reimbursed, and you only get money from the date they approve the project. So until they approve the project, everything we spend on this project comes out of the town coffers, and they will not reimburse us this program. There may be other programs that might come into play, but at this time, that's the only way this program works. We've also submitted the technical drawings and technical specifications we need to for a temporary bridge, and that's being reviewed by the DOT at this time as well. So when we first started out this project, we were looking at three options. Do not pay attention to the dates. This was very early in the process. CDM was working with me, trying to figure out what the options were, what the cost would be for a temporary bridge. We kind of narrowed down this first one, a prefabricated structure, which was going to have the least impact to the wetlands and the resource area, and the least impact to the actual roadway that was there. For the temporary bridge, we've worked our way through the items here. We have basically a foundation design. We have basically an allowable loading we can put on the foundation, and we have a basic type of bridge we can accept without doing a lot of changes. Mass Highway, like I said, is reviewing that, and we're hoping they'll approve us and tell us we can go out to bid. So these are the type of bridges we've been looking at. These two at the bottom are basically what are sometimes referred to as Bailey Bridges. They were designed during the Second World War as a temporary, fast, expedient bridge. The only issue with those is that you do raise the road surface up, or you have to dig down deeper to put the bridge in. The Safety Box Bridge, which is in the top right corner of the screen, my right corner, that's a -- that bridge takes less space out of the existing roadway and takes less space from the waterway below it. It's a little bit better design. This is our schedule we've been working on. We are right now, we do have a Conservation Commission meeting on Wednesday, so the NOI has been submitted. The Conservation Commission will start reviewing that. There is some other additional impacts or input into the conservation. Natural heritage has to -- Natural heritage has to, the natural heritage has to speak up about the endangered species that live there. We do have, we do have two endangered species that live in the area. So again, this is what our requirements are. Everything about this bridge is in critical habitat or in a resource area. It's just a bridge over a stream, which has got a lot of wetlands around it, on both sides. So, we're also working on the permanent design. The foundation for the permanent bridge is probably the biggest issue we're working on right now. We had a soil boring company out there, and they drilled borings into the ground and took samples of the soil. The soil is nothing but silty clay sand, which is, we had 80 feet of that. There's no bedrock anywhere around to set the bridge on, so we have to come up with a type of design for the foundation, which is a little different from the, what most people do in Massachusetts. It's not different than what you do down south, and it's basically the same foundation that I started out, and I started out in my career. So it's probably going to be a pile foundation on top of the sand to bear this load. But it is different than what they do in New England, and it's different than what most people are used to up here. The bridge will be longer. It has to be longer because it has to accommodate the stream crossing standards, which is what's been put in place to provide a better passing for the water and for the environmental critters that live in the stream and pass through the stream channels. We have a lot of right-of-way issues we have to deal with. Basically, we've got to stay within the right-of-way. We can't go outside. Conservation land on three sides, and one side is what's called watershed protection land. In order to use those lands, you have to go to the state, and you have to get permission from the state. One's the legislature, one's the Department of Environmental Protection. So anytime we go to the state, that just slows the project down. So if we stay within the right-of-way, we'll be much better. And we think we've been able to do that. And then this is our schedule we're working on right now for the permanent bridge schedule. It's not as big as the temporary one, because as we start getting into the more, more of the actual topics, we'll start expanding those out and having more tasks we have to do in those topics. But that's, this is the basic outline of what we have to do for the permanent bridge. Again, lots of, we'll have to get back to the ConsCom to get permitted for the permanent bridge. There'll be lots of additional requirements we have to have, because we'll be working in the water. We'll be working in the home of one of those endangered species, and we'll be working close to the habitat of one of those endangered species, so we'll have to deal with that. We also have to do some replication, because we'll be taking some of the resource area. We'll have to find a place and do some type of replication. And we'll also have to do some type of compensatory storage, because we'll be widening the bridge out, and we'll be filling what's the flood plain. We have to figure someplace else to accommodate that area we're filling for the flood plain. Those are the things beyond the bridge. And it's not just a simple bridge you put in, you have to fit it into the environment that the bridge is in. And then this is, right now, the proposed temporary bridge plan. And I'll skip this and go to the next presentation, because it talks more about money, which I think everyone's dying to know.
Are there questions, either first as clarifying and/or specific to the presentation thus far? I'm sorry, Pat?
When you say widening the-
Press, press. You have to move closer.
I have it, okay. When you say widening the bridge out, are you talking to expanding the, to two-lane bridge, or what?
Yes, I actually have a picture in the next, next little presentation, might help me with that.
I turned myself off, sorry.
Mandy Jo.
This one's for me. You mentioned a national heritage review. Is that a federal government review? And if so, is that on hold until the government reopens?
No, that's the state agency that does that review, and actually, they've already started, and we expect to have some comments back soon. We've had a lot of experience doing stuff with natural heritage, and they have a lot of experience with us, and they know if they don't speak very quickly, they need to speak very quickly with us at times. So, they are already started.
Dorothy.
You said you would take some money from road and sidewalk funds. Would that money be replaced at some future date?
I think the town manager will address that shortly after I finish with this.
Yeah, Andy.
So I, I had two questions, and one was related to what was just asked, and that is, if there's any specific projects that were planned for this year from the road and sidewalk funds that are not going to be able to be done this year as a result of this change, it would be helpful to know about that. And the second question is, having worked with you on the bridge that's below Puffers Pond Dam, which is almost completed, in it but in process, how does that process that was used compare to the process we're engaging in here?
Actually, let me, I kind of worked that into my presentation here about how the process will go.
Okay.
And I'll answer that.
Great. Any other clarifying questions, specific to the presentation thus far? Yes, Mandy Jo.
I have a request from Shalini.
Okay. Shalini, speak up, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yay! Okay. So, the question was, have we considered loaning a bridge from the state?
Yes, we have. So, I'll go ahead and answer that question. And that kind of goes back to the slide we had. If we borrow a bridge from the state, they have certain bridge types, and that requires us to actually build up higher, the road higher, and put more impact into the actual resource area. So, we've been trying to stay away from that and try to reduce the impact as much as we can to the little site we're in. It's a very tight site. We have a water line on one side, and there's actually a skew in the road. And when I bring the picture back up, that shows the layout of the temporary bridge, you'll see this skew is pretty dramatic. If we use anything the state has, like a Mayberry, or Bailey Bridge, you actually have to make it a good deal longer as a temporary bridge, just because of the way it's designed to have a bunch of safety factors built into it. But we'd end up with a 30-foot-long bridge. And the 30-foot-long bridge would actually shoot you into a part, would direct you, sorry, not shoot you. It would direct you as you're driving. Some people might shoot their car that way, but it would direct your car into a wetland area, and then you'd have to make a sharp adjustment to the left to get back on track and not go into the water. So from the alignment of the structure, a longer bridge for the temporary bridge makes it a little more difficult. And I'll show you in the picture, and I'll point that out.
Other questions at this time? Then let's go on with the next presentation.
Okay, this is what everybody sees when you go to the bridge now. So, we've broken the project, I kind of broke the project cost down to reflect, this is the permanent bridge cost here. And in your memo, you have an overall cost. And as I went through, I broke out the overall cost, and I broke out some of the money. Because as, when you see in the town manager's memo, he's kind of rounded numbers together. And this is kind of more of an exact number, and you can see where some of the rounding comes in. But for the permanent costs, we're looking at about $740,000 for the bridge. And because we're so far out in the construct, in the design right now, we have a very healthy contingency of 20%, which is another $150,000. And then we have a mobilization and demobilization charge. Usually, that's inside the bid documents, but this number we pulled out, because that's the way the consultant likes to do it, is keep that separate. But we expect to find that number in the bid when we bid it. So we're looking at roughly $925,000 for the structure, for the contractor to move onsite, take out whatever's there, but whether it's the old bridge, or whether it's a temporary bridge, to actually relocate the water line and to install the new bridge. That's what we're looking at as a possible cost right now, just to put in the permanent bridge. Temporary bridge, we're estimating to be about $170,000. We put a contingency cost on that one, and a mob cost on that one, and de-mob. And this is roughly around $200,000. And that's what we've rounded it off in the town manager's memo. So if we continue with the plan we're on now, and do a temporary bridge, then a permanent bridge, we're looking at 1.3 as being our total cost for this project. If you round it off, it's 1.4. So that's kind of where we're at. Right now, we're below the number of 227 for engineering costs. We're about 163, 164 right now. That's basically the way we're doing the task orders to the engineer. There'd be a final task order for the construction oversight. We've worked with CDM a great deal. They know what we're capable of. They're comfortable with some of the things we're able to do as far as inspections and onsite supervision. As we move towards the type of structure we're building, and we actually bid out the permanent structure, we'll sit down together, and we'll figure out what the town will oversee, and what the contract, the consultant engineer will have to oversee for us. So that, that number, 227, may go down, because we may do more of that oversight, as we've done in the past with projects with them. But right now, we're looking at a price of 1.4. When we started this project out, the rough estimate we had was $2.4 million, and we whittled a million dollars off so far. And as we keep working this project, we're hoping to get some more of our savings out of it, but we're not going to see another million dollars worth of savings. We're talking about the next probably amount of savings will be either 100 or 200,000 at the most. But this is how this has worked. So if, I know you have my original memo, or seen my original memo, which says 2.4 was the original, and now we've kind of worked this down. And as we work it down, as we get closer and find out things and understand more what's going on. Soil expiration was probably one of the biggest things that we had to find out a lot about, and we know a lot more now. So that was a big, a big unknown. The wetlands issues, we now completely understand those as well, and we also understand the hydraulic issues, the water flow through the channel as well. So those were big answers. So that's the overall cost. We're still on track with the schedule. I just put this in again, this is the same schedule I showed you earlier. Permanent bridge schedule, if we keep going the way we're going, we're hoping to be done by the end of August of 2020. The temporary bridge, we're hoping to have in place mid-April of this year, if we keep going the way we're going. And then this here is the alignment I was telling you about. So as you see in the middle, this little part right here is the bridge, and that's the temporary bridge lined up. That's to avoid kind of shooting off into the side over here into the water, if you're coming from the east, and to keep from having to relocate the water line now, right now, before the temporary bridge. The water line is right here on the side of the bridge. We're trying to not remove that right now. That would just delay installation of a temporary bridge. But as you can see, this blue dash line is your wetlands. Wetlands over here. And then property ownership, this side is consecration, conservation, and then watershed land up here where the horse farm was. So, that's the overall layout. What the bridge will look like when we're done is a little like this bridge, which is on East Levitt Road. When we talk about width of the bridge, it will be two lanes. So it'll be two 11-foot lanes, or two 12-foot lanes, depending what the state tells us to do. The difference between this bridge and East Levitt Road, if you wanted to look at it, and the permanent bridge is there will be some type of shoulder. There'll be a four or five-foot shoulder on each side. So that's another possibly 10 more feet of added space. Sidewalk is another issue. We have to decide with the state, and the state has to agree whether we put a sidewalk on the bridge. State requirements is that you have two travel lanes, two shoulders, two sidewalks. So we're going to have to apply for some waivers from the state. Hopefully, you can waive out the sidewalks and just do shoulders on the side, and then have the two travel lanes. So, that is, Andy's question was about how this-
How does this compare to, Andy?
So how-
How does this compare to the process in the Puffers Pond Bridge?
So the really great thing about how this compares to Puffers Pond Bridge is Puffers Pond Bridge was state money and a state project. The state controlled that project from the start to the finish. They came to the town and asked us if we want, if we wanted them to fix the bridge. We said yes, we want to fix it sort of like this. And then they went off and hired an engineer. They controlled the engineer, they directed the engineer, and now they're building the project and directing and controlling the project. The amount of money the town has in that bridge project is less than about $10,000, because I did some changes to some storm drainage, which actually made the project easier for them to design it, and kept us from having a lot of extra pipe out there. So that was totally managed by the state. If we're approved by the municipal small bridge program to do the project, we manage the project. We drive the project. If we get no money from the state and we have to pay for it with town money, we manage the project, we drive the project. So we don't have to do a lot of stuff with the state, except get their approval on the designs. And once their approval is done on the design, we can make things happen at the rate we want to make them happen. So that's the two differences. The state project on Mill Street Bridge was totally funded, totally managed by the state. What we want to do is have them fund it, but let us manage this project. And no matter what, we're going to probably manage this project. What's not going to get done right now, if we're, like I said, we're like $160,000 into this project. If we don't replenish that money back to the road repair funds, that's money we can't use in the spring for doing pothole patching. What we've been doing is taking money we receive in the budget and the capital, and we try to keep 100 to 200,000 left over, actually try to keep 200,000 left over. So as soon as the asphalt plants open in the spring, we can start patching roadways. You cannot use Chapter 90 money for patching the roadways. You can only use Chapter 90 money for actually doing overlays and repairs, major repairs to your roadways. So that, 160,000 out of that account, there's only probably about $50,000 left for pothole repairs in the spring.
Additional questions? Counselor, I'm sorry, Mandy Jo.
So again, this one's from me. A couple, you just touched on one of them, which was the 160 that is being spent, or is a portion of the town manager's request, is currently, has been taken from pothole repairing. So I guess one of my questions is, part of it is to the town manager, is there anything of that 162 that hasn't been already contracted out, such that if a temporary bridge, if the council doesn't approve a temporary bridge, is there any of that money that would not need sort of refunded to road repairs? And I guess I've, I've got a question on the permanent bridge timeline of, the design on a temporary bridge is very quick, but the permanent timeline had it quite long, eight months? And so, what's the difference in that, that sort of timeline as to why a permanent bridge design that's not the bid part? Because I understand that takes so much longer than the one that you've been working on for temporary.
So what the difference is, is I told you, the type, the task in the temporary bridge are already kind of exploded out. This task for the permanent design is compressed. It also has all the environmental permitting in it. So as I told you before, we're going to have to have a lot more environmental permitting in the permanent bridge, because we're going to be in the water, we're going to be taking, we're going to be taking resource area, we're going to be impacting the flood plain. So those are things we're not impacting. Those three things are not being done in the temporary bridge. So that's not something, part of that permitting process, but it is definitely part of the process that'll be in the permanent bridge design. So there's more environmental permitting, which has been lumped in right now with the bridge design. That's, if you read that one, it says includes environmental permitting. So there's three more tasks in environmental permitting that we're not doing for the temporary, because we're not being required right now to do that.
And as for the funding, so we have contracted, you can help me how much, I know how much we've contracted for, but I'm not sure how much we've spent. If we were to say, like if, if we were to say, just stop everything now, I'm not sure how much has actually been spent at this point in time. Maybe Guilford knows that. But much of the work that's being done now will apply for either a temporary or a permanent bridge. A lot of the environmental work applies to both along those lines. Do you know how much we've actually spent?
So I don't know exactly how much we've spent. They haven't sent me their last invoice to me. The thing to do is look at the schedule. So we won't have to do the finalize the plan for the bid. We'll have, we will be able to stop talking to Mass DOT, and there'll be no advertisement, no shop approvals, and none of that stuff. At the bottom of the- At the bottom of the project, all that work will stop on the temporary bridge if you say stop the temporary bridge. So it's probably about 10 grand in there of that 160 that is detailed probably towards that work. And that's probably a low estimate, but it's probably about 10 grand.
Dorothy.
I don't know how much the Puffers Pond Bridge cost, but I felt there was an implication when you were stressing that the town would be doing all the supervision, that somehow you think you could do it cheaper. Is that correct?
Wow. There's no DOT employees there, are there? We do do it cheaper. If you talk to most communities when they build something with Chapter 90 or town funds, it does come out cheaper. It's just, there's a lot of oversight and a lot of protections and a lot of steps built into the Mass DOT project because of the way the Mass DOT projects work. We have protections, we have oversight. We don't do it to the extent they do it, so there is some savings there. We also can make the project go a little smoother because when there's a change that comes up, it doesn't have to go all the way to the district office, or it doesn't have to go all the way to Boston to be approved. It can be handled rather quickly. It's normally handled at my office, and that's as far as it has to go. It usually is taken care of quickly, so it doesn't drag on. When you have larger projects like Mass DOT does, they have more oversight and more of this stuff built in, and it's protect themselves and protect the state money on these bigger projects. These are much smaller and we can move a little faster. So yes, we typically do save money.
Garcia.
Is it possible to reuse or sell the temporary bridge once we're done with it?
It depends on what type of bridge we get, and it depends also on how comfortable we feel with the design of the permanent bridge. If the temporary bridge comes in as a rental, someone bids a rental and says we're going to wrench into this bridge and the rental price is going to be within our budget, we may just rent the bridge and then turn it back over to them, and then we don't have any bridge we have to deal with. If it comes in as a good price and we use the bridge, we can turn around and try to use it again someplace else. We do have bridges in the watershed area which do not have to be approved by Mass DOT. They have to be approved by the town. We can possibly take one of those bridges out and replace it with this bridge. There's all sorts of possibilities depending on what the bridge type is that we actually choose. So yes, there's a good possibility we can either reuse it or resell it. It's going to be harder to resell than reuse.
Mandy Jo.
Kathy has a question.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, in fact, a little too loud.
Okay, and now I can whisper. I couldn't see the slides as it was being described about the sidewalks. Are the sidewalks issued only for the temporary bridge? Will the permanent bridge have sidewalks?
So the temporary bridge will only be one lane of traffic. There will be no sidewalks on the bridge and no shoulders on the bridge because we don't want to change the width of the impact area we're hitting right now. So the temporary bridge will just be big enough for traffic to go across trucks. There will be no ability for tractor trailers to go across it. Some of the garbage trucks will not be able to go across it. There might be a few landscapers who have really big trucks and long trailers who may not be able to go across it. It'll be able to accommodate passenger vehicle, pickup truck, small trailer on a pickup truck, and an ambulance.
Fire truck?
No fire truck.
Yes, listen.
This is perhaps more for the town manager, and I realize you indicated earlier you were looking to have this referred to our brand-new finance committee. But could you give us a sense, I believe, I don't want to misstate, but I believe that it was indicated that there would be no money for pothole repair in 2019 if we were to do this, and I'd like to be clear on that, and if so, where else can we transfer money to to do that? Because it's obviously not impossible to figure out other ways to do that, but I would like to know what our takeaway right now is, we do this, no pothole repairs in 2019.
Thank you for, I should clarify that, that's a really good question. So we would take the money that we're already spending and then replenish the pothole account with free cash probably. We have not gone to where the source would come. It could come from stabilization funds, or it could come from free cash, and that's a discussion we'd want to have with the finance committee as to where that money would come from. So we would have a new infusion of money to make the pothole account whole, basically.
I have a question, and that is if you did not do the temporary bridge, could you deliver on the permanent bridge faster?
So that was a new question I hadn't heard before, and I was asked that earlier today, and I sat down and started thinking about it a little bit. The answer is more than likely, there's a lot of things you can do if you don't have a temporary bridge there. Once, if a temporary bridge is not put in, you could start realigning the water line or making accommodations to realign the water line now instead of waiting until the bridge construction starts. Someone else could do those pieces. If you were not to, you could actually start demolition of some of the bridge, although that would impact people who walk. We haven't taken the bridge out now because we've been leaving it open for walkers and bicyclists. So it would kind of depend. You would be in a situation, and it's an iffy situation, you don't know really the answer right now. The state could come back and say everything's okay with the permanent bridge, and we can start bidding, and we might go faster, which I don't know if we really can or not. It's a big if. There could be things we could do. We may not be able to do things even if we don't have a temporary bridge there. It may just sit empty until we start construction in 2020. So it's kind of a hard question, and you need to know a little more. We have to be farther along to know a definitive answer, but if we're farther along and there's a definitive answer, we've pushed off the temporary bridge.
Okay. Are there other questions from the council? Yes, Evan.
So just for clarification, the state funds that we've applied for, any money we spend, it's a reimbursement, but any money we spend prior to receiving them, if we do, is on our own, we would be reimbursed for, correct?
That's correct.
Do we have any idea of a timeline of when that funding decision may be made?
We do and we don't. Talking to the district office, they're reviewing it now, so they will have a very good idea of whether they would recommend it or not soon. The question is, is there, doesn't seem to be much money or many of these grants being made right now. It's supposed to be a revolving application, and as the applications come in, they look at it, and then they fund them based on that. So we haven't got a definite answer from Boston about that. So the state will know pretty soon what they want to do, how they want to proceed, and then they'll let us know, and then we'll just have to see if they actually get money.
Other questions? Yes, Mandy Jo.
What's the lifespan of the permanent bridge? I'm trying to think of like cost of permanent versus the requested cost of the temporary here. So what's the general lifespan of a permanent bridge that we're looking at? And then the other question I had, let me see if I can find it, is, let me start there because...
So lifespan normally is 50 years. So we normally build a bridge the last 50 years and then have some type of rehab and overhaul that'll give you another 50 years of life out of it. We have many bridges in town which are well over 50 years, and they're doing quite well. The bridge on Bridge Road that had a small repair probably about 25 years ago, I believe, before I came here, and the bridge is in very good condition. So there's other bridges. The bridge on West Street has some minor issues, mostly with guardrails, not with the structure of itself. That was done in 85. Cool thing about that bridge is there's only eight pages to the plans. I got a copy of those plans, I was really excited, it was only eight pages. There's going to probably be about 100 pages in the bridge plans for this bridge, and I'm going to be like, really? But anyhow. But that bridge is still in good shape, too. Only the guardrails have an issue. So most of the bridges last definitely 50 years, and then you go from there with a little overhaul if you have to.
Mandy Jo.
I remembered my other question. It relates to if we install a temporary bridge, the timeline you're not so sure on a permanent bridge, and we don't know about the grant. So I guess my question relates to if the temporary bridge is installed. Does, would that potentially last long enough for if we don't get a Mass Bridge grant this year to be able to wait and apply again in order to maybe fund again and keep that temporary bridge in place until we could potentially get funding even if it's in a year or two so that the permanent bridge maybe takes longer? I hope you're getting where my question is going on that.
Yes. Depending on the type of bridge is, if you do, so if we go back to the Bailey-type, Mayberry-type bridges, they're maintenance-intensive, but they can't last a long time as you're always tightening bolts. You have to tighten bolts, you have to inspect them, make sure they don't get loose. The other bridge is a one-piece construction. It's welded, it stays in place, it's pretty much there until you take it out. So there is the possibility that your temporary bridge could be there longer. There are communities that have temporary bridges that still are in place. There's one in North Hampton, when you go to the Wildlife Refuge over there in the meadows, the name of it's, missing my brain right now, it starts with an A. Arcadia, right? Arcade? Okay.
David says yes.
There's actually a Bailey Bridge over there that's been there since, been there longer than I've been in this area, so it's been over 21 years.
What would the exact savings be or close to the savings be if we did not do the temporary bridge?
Right off the bat, I would say you're going to at least save the 200,000 that we were asking for for that bridge.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Dorothy.
But that would mean a long period of time in which a fired engine could not go across the bridge. Is that correct?
A fire engine will not be able to go across a temporary bridge either. So yes, we would be in August of 2020 before the bridge opens.
Yes, Paul.
Can I just address that? Because a number of people worried about the public safety, and so the first thing we did when the DPW was thinking about closing the bridge was contact the police chief and the fire chief to say, what is the impact on public safety? And the police chief felt like there was minimal impact because they could get to wherever they needed to go anyway. And the fire chief felt that they may take an alternate route to get to where they need to go. Oftentimes, if they're going to the neighborhood in Amherst Woods, they might go up Belcher Town Road in that way anyway because they cannot go down Southeast Street because of the overpasses. The trucks cannot get underneath the overpasses. If, one of the concerns from many people was, well, if I need to get to Cooley Dickinson fast, Station Road, I know, they know for a fact, and everybody knows that's the fastest to go down Station Road, which is true. When I raised that issue with the fire chief, his response was, the most important time increment you want to look at is how long it takes us to get to the patient, because he says we have a virtual emergency room on wheels. Having a paramedic at the side of a patient that needs support is the most important increment. And the biggest thing that impacts that is actually traffic in the time of day as opposed to the actual route, because they can get pretty much anywhere pretty quickly.
Additional questions from the council? Yes, Mandy Jo.
At one of the first public meetings, you talked about a bridge on, I don't remember whether it was Palmeroy Road or Palmeroy Court, that is also potentially being watched for closure. And I know this doesn't really relate to the Station Road Bridge per se, but is that on the actual main Palmeroy Road or was it on the court? Because I guess I'm thinking about if that one's close to potentially being closed and we put a temporary bridge in, you're still not getting your traffic lines. So can you talk about that potential relationship?
So it is the bridge on Palmeroy Road, not Palmeroy Court. It's actually, we're watching it not because of a bridge issue. We've actually been trying to figure out how to replace the bridge for sidewalks so we can connect the sidewalk which goes from the South Common to the Palmeroy Village Center. So we've been watching the bridge, and we've been trying to get the state to look at it more because we want to replace it for sidewalks. And I forgot that piece when I was at the meeting, but my town engineer reminded me that that's the reason why they were watching that bridge, that we're trying to push that one for a sidewalk project more than anything else. So it's still, it's been inspected recently, it's okay, and it's, and it's actually, the state actually put it on their small bridge, municipal small bridge inspection list, and it's still being looked at. But that one we're pushing on more because we want to put sidewalks and connect that. So it's not a structural problem with the bridge.
Two questions. If we put a one-lane bridge in here, is it correct to assume that we would have stoplights or something at either side of the bridge?
The consultant is proposing that we use stop signs.
Let me see. And the line of sight is sufficient?
It will be. We will back up. If you, so the stop line will be here, and the stop line will be here. So you're getting pushed pretty far back from the bridge where you have to stop and let another car go across. I, I'm not sure Mass Highway is going to agree to that, but that's what we're proposing right now.
The second question is, if we put a temporary bridge in, do we damage our chances of getting the state money for the small bridge program?
Originally, I thought we might damage our chances for that, but since the program doesn't seem to be on a continuous rolling basis, and there seem to be people submitting things and constant review going on, it doesn't seem to be happening, I don't think we're going to damage our chances as much. There is a possibility, we'll know sooner about that, but I don't think there will actually be a damage to our possibilities to get the grant if we put the temporary bridge in.
In the proposal for the temporary bridge, actually for the permanent bridge for the small bridge program, did you calculate into that reimbursement for our labor since we would be overseeing that and doing the work?
If we actually end up doing a lot of that work, some of that work is reimbursable and is in the numbers, if we decide to just contract it out, it's all covered in those numbers as well.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the council? Yes, Mandy Jo.
Just a quick one. If we get in the small bridge program, what's the percentage of cost they cover? Is it 100% of after approval, or is it some lesser percentage?
Usually, it's 100% of what they approve. The question is, what do they approve? It's much like the school projects we've been talking about in the past where they won't, they won't fund a pool. So if we come up with something we want to add on to this bridge which they don't think is necessary, they may not fund that piece to it. It's highly unlikely that we'll come up with something like that, although I've been told there used to be a diving board on this bridge and that we should historically recreate the diving board. They would probably not pay for the diving board, we would have to do that. So that's the, that's where you're at in this program.
Yes, Mandy Jo.
And this one, Shalini has a question.
Shalini, please.
Yeah, this is Shalini. So what would be the increased time for an ambulance to go from the house to a hospital like a base data, Cooley Dickinson, if you didn't have a temporary bridge?
This is Paul, Shalini. I don't have an increase in time increment exactly, so I don't know the answer to that question. Again, what I think, when I talked to the fire chief about it, he said sometimes they would choose to use Station Road, sometimes they might choose to use a different road depending on where they were going in the traffic patterns, but I don't... traffic patterns. But I don't, I don't have an answer to your question.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions from the council? All right. Let me just re, ask for a show of hands of those people from the audience who would like to speak to this issue only. I see two, three, four. Is there anybody else? Okay. Have you all registered? If you have not, please make sure that before I call you up, you do register, and you'll come up, you'll sit at one of the mics, make sure the mic is on. We'd like to have you contain your remarks to no more than three minutes. And if the person before you has already made the point, we ask that you respect your time as well as ours, and move on to any new points you would like to make. May I have the first person come on up? Sure. Please. Both of you.
I'm Martha Hanner. I live at 18 Alyssum Drive in Amherst. So I am in the area of South Amherst that is impacted. Just want to say that this closure of Station Road is a big impact on the whole traffic flow in the South Amherst area. When you stop and think that Station Road is the only direct east road in between, East-West Road, in between the town center and Bay Road, way down at the, at the south end of Amherst. And so we really do feel the urgency to get a temporary bridge in just as soon as possible. Local businesses are also impacted. I've spoken with several, everyone that makes deliveries is concerned, because they are having to pay their employees extra time to drive around the detours and making deliveries. And we are concerned about hazardous conditions on these detour secondary roads during wintertime as well. So we would like to request certainly that the council approve the temporary bridge. We'd also like to request that the council help to expedite any areas that are under your control, such as approving the funding, or working with our local conservation committee to expedite things, so that the, that the proposal for the temporary bridge can go out to bid and get the contractor and get to work just as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanner.
I'm Peter Berwick. I live at 87 Woodlot Road. Like Martha, I'm in one of the areas that's most affected by the absence of being able to get across Hop Brook on Station Road. I don't want to repeat what Martha has already said. I think she said it very well. At the, I want to thank Guilford-Mooring and Paul Bockelman for the clarity with which they have been presenting information about the both stages of the bridge project, and I hope you find that helpful to you in your deliberations. At the meeting on December 19th, the engineers from CDM Smith spoke about the possibility that a permanent bridge design could be done in such a way, it could be built in such a way, so that the temporary bridge could remain in place while the first phase of the permanent bridge was constructed, and then removed after it was possible to use the permanent bridge, use half of the permanent bridge. I'm wondering whether that plan is still in the works, or whether there is any possibility of avoiding that five-month period with no bridge at all, once the construction starts for a permanent bridge.
Thank you. The other people that would like to comment. Yes, way back here on the, to my right, young man, please come forward.
I would just like to remind everyone that the fire chief and police chief said that there isn't any safety impact to having Station Road closed, and because of that, we shouldn't really worry about that issue. Thank you.
And your name, sir?
Julian Hines, 54 High Street.
Thank you. Another, there was one other comment. Yes?
Good evening. My name is Nancy Keefe. I've been a resident of 10 Poets Corner in East Amherst since 2001, and I really appreciate Ms. Hanner's input this evening about the appropriation of sidewalk finances, if they would be taken away in this case, to support any changes that may be needed, in this case for the new bridge, or for the bridge. I have become increasingly concerned, and have started an informal needs assessment in my neighborhood of landlords and residents and students in the landlord properties concerning the safety issues of the sidewalk that goes specifically from the intersection of Main Street, Southeast Street, Northeast Street, down to Ward Street, across from the Amherst Brook. The lack of lighting is dangerous, the lack of cut through, cut into the earth that goes along the sidewalks, and the gravel that has not been removed. I don't use a car, so I have been accustomed to this now for the last eight months, where I'm on foot, and I see the issues that are not safe. So as a course of public way that Mr. Bockelman referred to, and my own safety, I will walk home tonight. It's 1.6 miles, and part of it is in the dark. Okay? This is an area that I would like to, and I'd look forward to the town looking into. Coincidentally, it did come up this evening. I thank you very much.
Were there any other comments? Okay. This is where I, very briefly, am going to try to summarize and then ask for an action. Obviously, this is an issue of serious importance to many residents of our town, and we have had a number of opportunities where both the town manager and Guilford have been available and made presentations. They will also be available to the finance committee as they do further deliberations, and perhaps some of these additional questions might be forwarded at that time. Obviously, the question before the council is whether or not to build a temporary bridge or move directly to a permanent bridge. What is the cost of that, and what are the trade-offs in terms of what else we might not be able to do as a town? With that, I'd like to ask a council member to make the following motion: to refer the question of the Station Road Bridge replacement to the finance committee, and ask that the review, they review the matter as expeditiously as possible, and return to the council on January 28, 2019, with a recommendation for action regarding this matter. Do I hear a motion? Mandy Jo?
So moved, because it's too long to repeat by memory.
That's fine. Second? Pat? So that was Mandy Jo made, made the motion, and Pat seconded it. This is the first of our, is there any other discussion at this time regarding the motion? If not, then we, yes, I'm sorry?
Just to clarify, the motion requires that the finance committee submit its recommendation by our next meeting?
Yes. Okay. Any other clarification questions? All right. So we have to do a roll call, and I will ask the town clerk to conduct that roll call. If you could, let's do the first two people that are remote, so that we make sure that happens.
Counselor Bockelman?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Brewer? Counselor DeAngelis? Counselor Dumont?
Yes.
Counselor Gryzmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hanke?
Yes.
Counselor Pam? Counselor Ross?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan? Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
And Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
Unanimous.
The vote is unanimous, and thank you very much for those of you that have been here for that part of the meeting. Do you want a break? Okay. We're going to make, take a brief, very brief, five-minute break and come back. Okay. Can you confirm?
Yes.
Thank you. And Counselor Bockelman?
Yes. Thank you.
We're going to move on to the Energy and Climate Resilience Committee. This is a proposed committee, and in this case, we're actually going to begin this, being introduced by two counselors, Darcy Dumont and Evan Ross. They have worked countless hours to bring this to us this evening, and I can attest to that, because a couple times, I actually sat and worked with them. So we'll begin with their presentation about the proposed committee, and then Mr. Bockelman will introduce some town presentations as well. And then we'll go through a similar process to what we've done here, which is questions and so forth from the council, and then eventually, audience participation. So, Darcy.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be introducing my first piece of legislation, which you can see in your packets. The motion and committee charge of an Amherst Energy and Climate Resilience Committee, which I've worked on in collaboration with Evan Ross, as opposed to Counselor Ross. A sustainability committee for Amherst has been on the drawing board for more than a year now, and the new town council has been looking forward to forming such a committee as a very exciting and positive act of unity in the new year. It's been very gratifying to work with a council president, town manager, and town staff, who deeply understand the importance of prioritizing climate action. As we all know, climate change is a global emergency. This year, we've had major wake-up calls reminding us that we need to act locally, and we need to act now to curb its long-lasting and devastating effects. The 2018 U.N. International Panel on Climate Change report underlined the impacts of exceeding global warming of 1.5 degrees centigrade above pre-industrial levels. The report says, in the starkest possible terms, that humans have at most 12 years to fix their addiction to fossil fuels and drastically reduce carbon emissions if we're to have any chance of staying below that goal. It's very exciting that almost 50 members of Congress, including our own Congressman Jim McGovern, have signed on to support the idea of a Green New Deal, an aggressive new jobs program to, to move the United States to a renewable energy economy within 10 years. However, it's unlikely that a Green New Deal bill will be passed by the current Congress or signed by the president. Inaction at the state and federal level on bold climate proposals highlights a need for local action. Amherst has a history of recognizing the challenge presented by climate change, and the town will be providing a presentation about the sustainability initiatives it has spearheaded over the last two decades. So though the town has accomplished much, we do have a long way to achieve our ambitious climate action goals. Over the past six years, I've been volunteering around the state, working to get climate action going. I've worked closely with Climate Action Now, Mothers Out Front, the Sierra Club, Environment Mass, and top legislative leaders on moving climate action forward. This has allowed me to meet other advocates from all over the state, and to find out what those advocates are doing in their communities. What I've found out is that Amherst has some catching up to do. For example, Watertown is the first town in Massachusetts to require solar on new commercial buildings. Salem, Newton, and Framingham are some towns, some of the towns putting solar on municipal buildings and parking lots. Newton is on track to supply almost half of its energy locally on schools, libraries, and other municipal land and buildings. Our own UMass now has solar canopies on two parking lots and panels on buildings. Some towns are transitioning their fleets to electric. Lowell has three wind power facilities in addition to its nine public solar facilities. Over 140 municipalities have authorized community choice energy, with many of those choosing to green their supply through the purchase of more renewable energy. Cambridge is one of the most bike-friendly cities in the country. North Hampton has implemented a program called Button Up North Hampton, where volunteers canvass door-to-door to educate homeowners and renters about energy efficiency and conservation, and how to transition to the use of heat pumps at low cost under a Green Communities grant. Communities that have the most vibrant programs have a combination of these three elements: a motivated mayor or town manager, a sustainability director or manager, and a citizen-driven climate action or sustainability committee. Amherst needs to join these cities and towns by establishing itself as a municipal energy and climate leader, and by doing it now. Let's not delay. Let's make this discussion the last step in the process that will result in a vote on January 28, in support of a new committee that will drive climate action in Amherst.
Evan?
Thank you. Thank you, Darcy, for your comments highlighting the important need for this committee, and providing some of the larger context in which we begin this discussion. I'll use my time instead to speak to the processes through which we came to this committee, the focus and scope of the committee, and also my hope for how we might proceed. So the draft in your packet, as Darcy mentioned, is the end result of a long process that began prior to this council being seated. Such a committee has been suggested by our town manager and town staff, long before Counselor Darcy, and I picked it up. And I want to thank them for their efforts and their commitment to making Amherst a more environmentally sustainable place. The current charge, though, further represents countless hours of work by several players. Over the past month, Counselor Dumont and I have revised and refined this proposal together with each successive draft substantively different from the previous. We also met with our council president several times, our town manager, our assistant town manager, and our sustainability coordinator. In every meeting, each collaborator came with their own vision of what this committee should do and should look like, and we worked to find common ground and produce a proposal that included everyone's ideas to, and intent, to a practicable, practicable extent. The result is a proposal that looks different from, certainly different from the original draft that Darcy and I promulgated, and also different from the proposal that Town Manager Bockelman put before the select board, I believe, last February. So as such, this charge is the result of negotiation, collaboration, and compromise, and I'm proud of the work that went into it and the process through which we arrived at it. I also want to speak to the focus and scope of this committee. I believe the, the scope and focus of this committee fits our current moment. In the past, Darcy mentioned several reports, but in the past two weeks, the Baker Administration released two other fairly groundbreaking reports. One is the Massachusetts Comprehensive Energy Plan, and the other is the lengthy two-volume report released by the Commission on the Future of Transportation. And these two reports set some fairly ambitious climate and energy recommendations for the Commonwealth. Above them, and I'll just read a few, quote, "To promote fuel switching in the thermal sector from more expensive, higher-carbon fuels to lower-cost, lower-carbon fuels." Quote, "Address the split incentive," this is going to be particularly important here, "between landlords and renters for investments in energy efficiency." Quote, "Enable and promote a ubiquitous electric charging infrastructure," and quote, "Make all current and future critical estate and municipal transportation infrastructure resilient to a changing climate." Meeting these goals necessarily requires action at both the state and the local level, and necessitates municipal planning and prioritization. This committee, with its focus on climate mitigation and building climate resilience, will help establish the necessary structural support for Amherst to partner with the state to play its requisite part in moving the Commonwealth towards these goals. Second, the climate-focused charge of this committee provides the body with a clear mission and trajectory forward. While sustainability is an oft-used buzzword, its borderless nature means that it can be difficult for the public to conceptualize an end goal for sustainability. That makes long-term planning and prioritization difficult, and also makes, leaves us susceptible to misprioritizing and losing focus. As someone who's worked for years in some capacity in environmental protection and conservation, I've often felt the frustration of a public that is enamored with contemporary sustainability fads at the expense of more important, but sometimes unglamorous, work. With a focused charge that commits this committee in assisting the town towards a carbon neutrality goal, and with a complementary focus on building our town's resilience to climate change, the public will see not only the means of the committee, but also the ends to which the committee is working, and understand how these actions are being implemented. the ends to which the committee is working, and understand how these actions fit into a larger path forward. I believe this focused mission is important, and would caution against diluting it. Finally, I also want to emphasize that while the scope of simply climate and energy may seem narrow at the surface, the work of this committee will be anything but. Because so much of our society is tied to the combustion of fossil fuels, and because so many aspects of our town affairs will be impacted by climate change, the charge of this committee permeates throughout the various sectors of town. Climate mitigation is more than just solar panels. It also requires tackling demand and tackling our transportation and building paradigms. Climate resilience is even broader. It involves questions like, can our stormwater infrastructure handle a future with more intense precipitation? Can our farming community adjust to more erratic climate and changing climate zones? Can our vulnerable populations withstand increased cooling costs from more persistent and frequent heat waves? So, in many ways, this committee's charge extends beyond the traditional definitions of sustainability, and necessarily incorporates all sectors and communities of our town. It also means that this charge of this committee is a heavy lift, and it will require a committee that is proactive, focused, well-equipped, and inclusive. Last, I just want to give my hopes for moving forward. Putting together this charge has been an exciting, if laborious, process. As I mentioned earlier, all sides made concessions, and I believe we have crafted a charge that finds a good balance between being prescriptive yet flexible, ambitious yet rational, action-oriented yet prudent. So, tonight's discussion, I hope, will serve as this final step. I'm looking forward to hearing comments from my colleagues, who have had a chance to read through this, and also from the public, so that we can take onboard those comments, make some final revisions, and bring back an amended charge for a vote next meeting. So, I thank you, and I look forward to hearing your comments, and also fielding any questions that you have regarding this charge.
Okay. We're going to go on and have the town make their presentation, but thank you both, Darcy and Evan, for your comments and your introduction of this very important issue. Mr. Bauchman?
Thank you. Well, we are all the towns, so town staff make this presentation, and I appreciate the two councilors' very thoughtful and articulate remarks for bringing it to the public. Nearly a year ago, this issue came up, and the Select Board began to consider it, and then, with the change of government, recognized it was a pretty large undertaking by the town, and felt it was inappropriate for the Select Board at that time to take it on as a major commitment by the town in anticipation of the change of government. So, I'm really thrilled that it's come back up as probably the first major initiative of the town council. It's really important for the town council, Darcy talked about different roles, but I think for our community, the town council weighing in, debating, considering this initiative is probably the most important thing. You are the elected leaders of the community. You are the ones who have to set the standard and the goals for where you want the town to go. Staff is charged with working to make sure we can get there. Our job with you is to say what's achievable. Your job is to say, this is the direction we want to go. And so, we look forward to your direction, if you agree that this is the direction you'd like the town to go in. I'm not going to talk anymore, because we have our assistant town manager, David Zomack, and our sustainability coordinator, Stephanie Chicorello, here. And we just have a few slides that we want to go through to give some background on where we've been, so you know, as you start to consider us, where we should be going.
Thank you. Please.
Thank you very much. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Dave Zomack. I'm the assistant town manager. I also have, as part of my title, the Director of Conservation and Development. I think that's very appropriate to just mention tonight, because many of the departments within the town that are involved with planning, master plan efforts, inspections, and building in town, as well as conservation and sustainability, are all housed in the doors behind us here to the south of this building on the second floor. And all of those staff members, including Stephanie and myself, all collaborate together. So, I think that's kind of a theme, that what Stephanie does and what we're talking about tonight, really, as mentioned earlier by the two council members, needs to be infused and part of everything we do in town. I'm joined this evening by Stephanie Chicorello. Stephanie has worked for the town for many, many years in conservation, and in 2016, her position was made full-time and given the title of Sustainability Coordinator. Prior to that, she worked on a number of different initiatives as our Wetlands Administrator. I'll let her talk about the various things, initiatives that she's been involved with through the years. She's well-known and respected by her colleagues here in the valley, as well as in the Commonwealth. And as I said before, where Stephanie sits within planning, within inspections, affords her the opportunity to work with staff, engineers, and DPWs, our schools, our Facilities Department, as well as various local and regional energy and sustainability-related nonprofits and groups. So, we're looking forward to working with all of you. We're looking forward to working with the many people behind us that support these efforts, and many people at home. We're excited about this initiative. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to Stephanie, so she can talk more specifically about what we've done, and where we hope to work with you moving forward.
Good evening, Council President and council members. Particularly, thank you, council members Dumont and Ross, for your work on this initiative. I'd like to just go over a history of the work that, at least, I've been involved in since, I've been with the town since 1997. The work that I began doing on this initiative was probably starting in around 2000. The town of Amherst made a commitment to join an organization called ICLI, Local Governments for Sustainability. The name used to be an acronym for something, but now it's just kind of an odd name. But they have a wonderful program called the Cities for Climate Protection Program, which launched us into looking at our greenhouse gas emissions and looking at the issue of climate change. And part of the charge, when the town convened an ad hoc committee, Energy Task Force Committee, was to, one of the charges was to put together a climate action plan. So, the action plan was released in 2005, and what we discovered was that, really, our emissions, if you look at our 1997, is our baseline year for that greenhouse gas emissions inventory that was done. Most of the emissions, this is like the entire community, so including, you know, town government, institutions, industry, the government portion was fairly small compared to the community at large. The community sector, as I said, is here, represents residential, commercial, industrial. Of course, industrial, we have very little, so it's a very, very small portion. But the largest piece of our pie here is actually the commercial, which includes the institutions of higher education. The town shifted its focus in 2012, when the Green Communities Program became available in the state. The Green Communities Program launched in 2010, and it was an opportunity for communities to focus on the municipal side and energy efficiency, but it came with funding tied to it, so that communities were able to receive grants to actually implement energy efficiency projects. And this was a real game changer, actually, for many communities within the Commonwealth, because when you create these climate action plans and you identify these initiatives, they, of course, come very often with a price tag. So, this was an opportunity for the town to get funding to actually do some of these efficiency projects, which ultimately, although it's focused on energy efficiency, really is moving towards reducing greenhouse gas emissions, because that is one of the primary ways in which we deal with reducing our greenhouse gas emissions, is to increase energy efficiency and reduce energy usage. So, one of our very first projects, and the first grant that we got, was for an LED streetlight retrofit, and the total project cost for this was about half a million dollars. With the Green Communities funding, we got $302,000 for our very first grant, and then, tied to the utility incentive, nearly three-quarters of the project cost was covered, either in Green Communities grant funding and with the utility incentive funding. So, that the town portion, although seeming fairly sizable, we were able to do a project that actually yielded a pretty fairly quick return on investment, because the estimated annual cost savings was roughly about $48,000 once the project was implemented. So, the emissions are important, but also, one of the things about the Green Communities Program that has been really a driver for a lot of communities is the fact that it's also tied with cost savings as well, in addition to energy savings. We used 2011 as our baseline year for the environmental, I'm sorry, the energy reduction plan that we created as part of the Green Communities application. That is a, the Green Communities application is really a five-milestone, or a five-milestone process that you have to basically achieve in order to become a green community. So, one of those things was to create, to pass the Stretch Energy Code, and another was to create an energy reduction plan. So, the five-year energy reduction plan used 2011 as our baseline year. And when we looked at our, we created a new greenhouse gas emissions inventory in 2017, we used 2011 as our baseline year, and then compared it to 2016. And we saw that, when we looked at the community-wide greenhouse gas emissions, really, you know, we really hadn't seen much change in the community-wide sector, whereas when we look at the municipal greenhouse gas emissions, we did see some fairly sizable reduction. But again, you know, we're looking at a heavy lift with greenhouse gas emissions reductions, because it's not enough to just say, well, look, we're doing this, and that's great. We really need to continue. And when we look at what's happening, kind of, not even nationwide, but even globally, the bar is higher now. We're looking more at carbon neutrality. It used to be just to sort of reduce our emissions by a certain percentage by a certain year. Really, a big lofty goal now is to really try to achieve carbon neutrality. So, as I mentioned, the municipal reductions between FY 2011 and 2016 were fairly sizable, but if we're looking at carbon neutrality, you know, that's a much loftier goal, if that is the direction we go in. And those kinds of projections are still something that really need to be examined and looked at. So, as this council makes their decision and creates a committee, and the committee moves forward, these are things that we have to consider, is what would be our target, what target, what would be our year for our target, and these are things that we'd have to, goals that we would have to set. So, this is a very quick summary slide, a quick thumbnail of what are some of the more major initiatives that have been implemented since 2000, the year 2000, when we really started work in earnest on reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. And the town pretty much focused on partners, partnerships and programs with the utility, with other nonprofits. Then, we looked at our municipal efficiency, are the things that we actually implemented through Green Communities and other specific projects. So, these are the actually projects that have been driven. The solar landfill, I will mention it, because it has not gone away. That project really is moving forward. We're making progress. We're just about to fully execute our revised power purchase agreement, so we're all very excited to see that project continue. In the transportation sector, we've had a number of initiatives. As mentioned, you know, greening the fleet is certainly something that we would strive to do, and we've purchased two electric vehicles. We've installed three dual-head electric vehicle charging stations. And as many of you, I hope, have noticed, over this past year, we launched Valley Bike Share, which has now given us a bike share program, where people can actually use bicycles, which are electric-assist bicycles, to help them with some of their short, quick errands instead of getting in a vehicle and driving. And we are noticing that, actually, Amherst has been one of the largest users of the entire network in the valley. Because of UMass, a lot of the students are actually using, heavily using this program. So, that's really exciting for us, and I think for our community, and speaks a lot to what we're doing. And then, when we look at, you know, sort of your role in the bylaw and resolutions that we've had over time, since 2000, several of these initiatives have been, this legislation has been passed within the community that has moved, you know, moved us forward towards these goals. Some of them have been town-driven, some of them have been driven by advocacy groups, and some of them by individual residents. So, there are initiatives that really have been moving us in the direction, but again, as mentioned, you know, we still have a ways to go. And when I started this work back in 2000, the predictions of where we would be with climate change, there were, you know, there were sort of a, you know, the best-case scenario, the medium-case scenario, and then the worst-case scenario. Sadly, we're at a worst-case scenario in time, and so, we're really, we're really at a point where we need to look forward and do things more aggressively, because this does have a direct impact on the residents and our community, and we look forward to working with you and moving this work forward.
We're going to move now to the council discussion. And while I, I'm sure there's additional questions about what any of the speakers have made, or any of the programs going on with the town, I'm going to imagine that most of the conversation will be around the actual draft for the committee charge. But, councilors, please, your questions, your points of clarification. Mandy Jo.
I'll start. The title of the committee is Energy and Climate Resilience. And in doing a whole bunch of reading that you guys, thank you for providing all of those links about the issue, it seemed to me, in reading the charge, that there wasn't a lot of resilience in the charge. So, can you speak to, there weren't goals for resilience that the committee has to come back with? It was in there as you can, if you want, for the resilience part, the part of, say, dealing with stormwater drainage, as you mentioned, Evan, or if there's excess water, the agriculture part, which for this town is huge, if we're going to get 60-some inches of rain every year, like we just did, that's some sort of thing we're going to have to deal with in this town. And I didn't see that in the charges as much as the title implied. So, can you talk to, you know, can you talk about where that would be, and what the thoughts are on that?
I could start off on that. The charge does mention, in addition to climate mitigation, adaptation. So, I think we wanted to include that in the title. It is also a concept that comes out, is referred to repeatedly in climate, Community Choice Energy, as one of the benefits, and that is a direction that we hope that we're going So, and we did hear that some councilors were confused about whether it meant the climate is being resilient, but that is not what it means. So, do you have more to add to that, Evan?
Evan? Yes?
So, resilience really, there are no resilience goals. And my short answer to that is, I'm not quite sure what specific resilience goals would look like, whereas it's fairly easy to say emissions are something that are calculable, and you can say, okay, we want emissions reductions at this percentage or at this rate. Percentage of energy supplied by renewables, that's something that you can actually set a goal for. Resilience is a bit harder. I would argue that resilience is, I may take this statement back after I say it, but that resilience is less goal-setting and more planning. And so, looking at the charge, resilience really appears in two places. One would be 3B, which is that the purpose of the committee would be in part to recommend to either the town council or the town manager, whoever has jurisdiction, actions to implement anything that builds climate resilience. And so, the assumption being that some of what the committee would do would be to work on mitigation, but it would also be recommending policies, programs, that would also work towards resilience. also work towards resilience. The other part of that would be under 5A, which is Plan and Prioritize Cross-Sector Efforts to Reduce Amherst Greenhouse Gas, Gas Emissions and Build Climate Resilience. So, the word resilience may seem like it does not appear that often in the charge, but it is tied to what I would argue are the two most significant actions of the committee, which is, one, promulgating new policies and programs that it would recommend, and two, sort of long-term planning. At this stage, I think that the planning is probably a bigger part of resilience, and something could come after that. And perhaps our sustainability coordinator can speak a bit more to what that looks like. You can look to Northampton for what they've done for resilience planning, but that would be the first step before you could really set any type of goals, whereas we already have a 2005 Climate Action Plan that talked about emissions reduction. So, a lot of that groundwork has already been done.
Questions? Yes. Steve.
So, Madam President Lynn had asked us to send her individual comments, so I, I thought that I might share some of my comments. And so, first, I think that, you know, kudos, I mean, I think this committee is very much needed. And so, really, my concerns are not so much about the need for such a committee, but some other issues, namely, there's a staggering list of boards and committees in Amherst. Some are required by Mass General Law, some are required by the Charter. So, really, the coordination with those other committees. So, a lot of what you're describing regarding resilience is planning. We have a planning board who is also very focused on, you know, these issues within its jurisdiction. So, how, so, so I guess I become concerned about boards and committees that are perhaps even working at odds with each other, are working not coordinated with each other. So, one of the suggestions I had forwarded to Lynn was of the membership, perhaps some of those members should be people who are on other committees. So, we have two councillors proposed, and then seven others, but perhaps some of those seven others can be, say, a representative from the blank. The other ones were sort of nitpicky comments. So, a lot of greenhouse gas concerns have to do, obviously, with architecture, with buildings. And so, you've addressed that with net-zero buildings and energy-efficient retrofits. But there's a bigger part to the puzzle, which is people that can understand sort of the community implications of all of this, someone who can connect the dots between, say, net-zero buildings, because there's an upside to net-zero buildings and a downside, downside that it favors certain kinds of sites and certain kinds of buildings. So, not every building is easy to be net-zero energy, net-zero water. But someone who can sort of help evaluate, the committee evaluate what the holistic goals for the community are, I think are very important in choosing membership. And so, maybe one last comment before I, before I forget what I had written to you, was, it's not clear who actually choose them, chooses the members. So, we say that these shall be the members, but I don't think it says anywhere, or maybe I missed it, who the appointing authority is. There you go. Town council, okay.
I stand corrected. That's why I said that.
Andy.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the councillors who worked so hard on putting this together and getting us started in this conversation and its newest chapter. As a member of the Select Board, I was one of the people who was involved in this discussion quite a bit over the past year and was part of the decision to say, "This is really too big for the Select Board to responsibly make the step for the town and to postpone it until we had a council." And so, I'm pleased we're here, and I'm pleased we're taking it up as a first issue. There were several observations that I made about it, and I hope that we can keep moving on this. And so, my observations are meant to stimulate the discussion in the next stage so that we can still come back and on the schedule that we're talking about and get this done. One is that reading the draft of the char, committee charge and comparing it to all of the other committee charges that I have worked with over the years in my various capacities with the town, this is by far the most detailed and specific of committee charges that I think that I have seen. And we all received a compendium of current committee charges that was put together by Select Board Chair Swatter for us to consider. And in comparing those, I think that you'll be able to understand what I'm meaning by that. One of the reasons to not be overly specific in a charge is you don't want to be too prescriptive for a committee as far as what its duties are, and you don't want to set up a committee charge that needs to be constantly reviewed and revised. It's something that needs to have a living capacity to it. So, that's issue number one. Issue number two is that in my role as a Select Board member, we had liaisons to committee, and I was liaison to the Recycling and Refuge Management Committee. And that committee was doing a lot of very good thinking and good work around issues that also relate to sustainability. And the, they have put forth a refuge management plan that is in need of a lot of work towards implementation. And I've learned a lot about that, about the whole role of committees working towards implementation through my work with that committee. The problem that I see coming forward is that I don't want to see the two committees competing with each other, and I don't want to see the committees, by being two committees, eating up resources. As Steve said a couple of minutes ago, we have an awful lot of committees in this town, and the original thought was to have a sustainability committee that would contain both of these issues. And part of the reasoning and the thinking behind that was not to create yet another committee that requires more staff time and more of our time as a council to oversee yet, yet, yet another committee, but to try and revise the committee and expand the committee's goal and role. And that thought process has been lost in this, and we, if we did this, then the question comes in is what happens with the goal for the refuge management plan? And then the final thing that I wanted to just touch on is that we, we talked about the carbon neutrality as a goal, as an end goal, and I'm not sure where that sits. And that was similar to something that came up with the refuge management plan. Was zero waste the goal in an aspirational sense? In other words, we wanted to work towards it and get as close to achieving zero waste? Or did we believe we really could achieve zero waste? And I think that the same thing applies when you talk about carbon neutrality. And I, it, it's just something that absolutely needs clarification because the impact on the town, on our residents, on our institutions, and on our businesses is tremendous if we put forward requirements through implement, trying to implement a goal, that's an absolute goal, that have a high cost on, on them. And it makes me a little bit nervous because we would be doing this as a matter of adopting a committee charge as opposed to the much more complex process of adopting a bylaw, and there hasn't been the opportunity for community discussion and input on what the benefits are of this goal and what, on the other hand, might be the costs. So, I hope that over the next couple of weeks, as we assign this to a committee, that that committee can sort of explore some of these questions.
Yes, Mandy Jo.
There are requests from both Kathy and Shalene to speak.
Okay. Kathy?
I'm just, is, is my voice the right volume?
It's very loud.
This is Kathy.
It's very loud.
Voice of God.
Oh, speak lower. Okay, I, I don't want to come across as shouting. I can whisper.
Okay.
Okay. I, I want to build on the, some of the comments on the need to be thinking cross-sector and across our committees is attempting to do, and it's quite exciting, the talking about emissions. One of the slides talked about how much of it comes from cars and transportation and buses. And we don't really have a cross-cutting set of planning issues around roads and around development that says, "What if we could get out of our cars and be walking more or be riding in electric buses or have sidewalks where people could get back and forth to school?" A vision of not using cars or using electric buses. And I, I think trying to weave a few of these things and linking to other committees would be very helpful because they tend to act in silos. So, I, I think I'll just stop there because it is this sense of not, it's not so much that we have lots of committees, but the committees don't talk to each other and come up with an overall vision. And I think it's really important. And I might just mention, I'm calling in from an old European city, and what I'm struck with is the number of people who are walking everywhere, riding their bicycles and taking buses, and cars just aren't there, and the air is cleaner. You can really sense how much the emissions that are coming, that would normally be coming out, just aren't there. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. Shalene, make sure you're off mute.
Oh, yes. Okay. Is my sound okay?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm continuing with this theme of the intersectionality. And so, what I would like to see more of in the proposal is how are we going from the goals, well, firstly, the goals, to expand them, to include the different dimensions, such as social, economic, cultural, environmental, or whatever way we decide, because when you think of resilience, again, it's cross-sectional, and it's impacting different aspects of our town. So, the goals need to reflect that. And as an example, if we had transportation as one of the areas where we set our goals, as Kathy also mentioned, that would determine our, you know, it would influence our funding priorities as well if that indeed is our goal. So, instead of where do we put our money? Do we first fix the potholes, or do we ensure that we have bike lanes and sidewalks? So, you know, just making sure that we are thinking broadly this, what our goals are in terms of resilience. And then, the, to get from our goals to the outcomes, I'm seeing there are programs and policies. What I'm not seeing is strategies, so the strategic vision, to lay that out more clearly so that, again, we are including all the different sectors, we're including all the different communities, the vulnerable populations, and the different sectors. So, having more of a, a comprehensive plan and a roadmap that takes us from our goals to the end. And then, the programs and policies become more the action items rather than the strategic vision. And the third part of that is in terms of the membership of the committee, because it's impacting different cross-sections of our community, including the different committees that already exist, the transportation businesses, UMass being a big contributor, or businesses to have their buy-in and to understand the unique challenges that each stakeholder or each community is encountering. I feel the representation in this particular committee should take into account all these different voices and their perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Other councillors? Yes, Evan.
Just to lightly respond to some of, just to point out a few things. So, 5B and C has to do with the committee working alongside relevant multiple-member bodies and also coordinate, 5C, the text is coordinate with other multiple-member bodies, town departments, businesses, and residents, regional organizations, and the university of colleges, university and colleges, with the intent there being to have some of that interaction between committees that councillor, sorry, that Kathy suggested, and also get at that intersectionality that Shalene brought up. Also, just to point out, 4B, in the conduct of its work, the committee may propose strategic options and incentives. I believe that speaks perhaps a little bit to what Shalene brought up about going beyond programs and policies and looking at strategy, and that's specifically looking at strategy to overcome some of the many barriers to implementation that we may find, financial and otherwise.
Other comments? Darcy?
I'd just like to add to that, that the, the town is already engaged in a, in a process called the vulnerability assessment. And it will, it will be conducting, getting community input on our vulnerability to climate impacts. Maybe you could talk about that a little bit, Stephanie?
Yes, the town received a grant, this was a pre-charter effort, where the town secured a grant through the state for $29,000 for technical assistance to participate in the municipal vulnerability preparedness program. This is kind of a, a very formulaic program where communities across the Commonwealth are encouraged to look at their vulnerabilities in the face of climate change. And so, the first part is a planning process, and you will hear more about this in the coming month, but the, the town will put together two stakeholder meetings in which many, a broad spectrum of the, of the community will be invited to attend and to look at identifying what our vulnerabilities are to climate change. So, for instance, there will be, obviously, representatives from each of the institutions, but also those within the business community, those with work with our more vulnerable members of the community as well. And everyone will be gathered and broken out into groups, and will be able to identify our vulnerabilities. And then, the second part of the process is to then have a second meeting with the same stakeholders where we identify some kind of action. And then, from that process, there will then be a community listening session in which everybody in the community is invited to attend. And more feedback is gathered from that process, and then that's all put together in a report that is then provided to the town where it identifies the vulnerabilities and also some of the steps to take action. But it also makes a recommendation for a next, sort of a next phase. So, for instance, you know, depending on how things pan out within the stakeholder meetings, there may be some recommendation, for instance, to put together a climate action plan or a resiliency plan. So, that will be spelled out in that, in that report. And then, that allows us and opens us up to the ability to apply for an action grant where we can actually then implement some of the actions that were identified in the report.
Thank you. Other councillor comments? Yes, Dorothy?
I just want to say thank you to Darcy and Evan for all the work they did. I think this is an incredible document, and I think it's wonderful that the town of Amherst has been active in this area for really a long time, and that I'm hoping that we can move forward quickly because time is running out.
Sarah? Excuse me. Sarah?
Hard to follow that up. I was just going to make-
[laughing]
I was just going to make-
[laughing]
I was just going to make-
I was just going to make a point to the fact that we're talking about different committees and whether they would or would not be working against each other. I think the way that this committee is set up is it's, I don't think that it's, its charges are too broad, but I feel like it brings together a lot of the, the things that other committees are trying to work towards. So I feel like instead of other committees, you know, fighting against this or not being heard, I think especially when bringing up membership and bringing in other committees, I think it's a chance for, like I say, the refuse committee, and also I'd like to say the ag commission, because farming and us being able to feed ourselves is huge, you know? If you can't feed yourself, then the lights might be on, the heat might be on, but you might not be there for very long. But I see that these smaller, well, they're not smaller, but the committees that are smaller that are working on specific goals would then be able to do extra work for this committee, and then no one would be lost. Everyone would actually be working towards more immediate goals together.
Are there other comments? Yes, George?
Yeah, I have two, one specific question concerning, sorry, actually, two questions. The first has to do with the, in 1A, the request that the committee set a date certain for two very specific goals, both in 1A1 and 1A2. I wonder if you could just address that a bit? It seems like within 90 days for them to set a date certain for achieving carbon neutrality, given all the complexities and multiple factors involved. Is that an aspirational, what's the thinking behind that first? My first just question.
Darcy or Evan? Which one?
I think that the goal that most states and cities have been looking at up until now is a date by, by which they would become carbon neutral. And the 2050 is the date that's commonly looked to. So, but we were not, we didn't want to be prescriptive, so we wanted to give the committee the opportunity to decide what date. Some communities have come up with a date that's sooner than that. The, the new legislation, the 100% renewable legislation, has also set out an interim goal by which communities could become 100% renewable electricity. And the goal there is to, to get towns and the state to electrify their heating and their building and transportation sectors. And then if they set a goal for 100% renewable electricity, that actually gets the bulk of the work done by that date. And the, in the state legislation, that date is 2035. So there are towns now that are setting these final dates and interim dates, and some setting annual dates in order to be able to fulfill their end goals. So it's, I think that it would be not that difficult to look at what other communities have done, and the process that they've gone through. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, and it wouldn't be that hard to come up with our goals.
Additional comment? Yes?
Darcy said most of what I would have said. I think the key points here, because it does seem like a fairly short span of time, and they do seem like significant goals, one of which is, this is perhaps one of the areas that Amherst is slightly behind on, and that there are many other communities that have gone through this process. And so I think that there's a lot to model on. The, the other question, which is sort of unaddressed, which Andy brought up earlier, is whether or not these goals should be viewed as aspirational or absolute. And I want to speak on behalf of myself and not on behalf of Darcy here, because we haven't had this discussion, but to some extent, I don't think that was within our scope of work to determine, because we wanted to give the committee the, the work and the responsibility, but also the ownership of what these goals look like. And so I think that how these goals should be interpreted, what those dates are, that should be the work of a committee that is obviously broader than just Darcy and myself sitting in a room. Keeping in mind, of course, the recommendations that they put forth for these goals will, by the design of this charge, come before the council, and so the council would have another chance to ask the committee whether or not those goals are aspirational or absolute, and what their reasoning is behind that. So this will not be the last discussion on these goals.
Mandy Jo?
Shalini has another question.
Shalini?
I think one of the other things I wanted to add to the charge, even though it's mentioned in 4E, that the committee may propose to town council funding opportunities, I think that should be an important part and that this committee should be doing, is looking at the funding and revolving loans and all of these different options to make it feasible for the different communities to adopt these goals.
Okay. Yes, Alyssa?
Thank you. And I do not actually have comments, because they've already been made, associated with the content in terms of all the good things we're trying to do. I have some comments about the mechanics. And I think probably the best way for me to do that is to submit through the chair a restructuring, simply of how this looks. All the meaty parts in the middle, no worries, those aren't being changed. It's just the part about where things fall in the charge document. This doesn't look much like any of our previous charge documents, it's a new kind of charge document, and that's great, because we should be doing new things, but it's also, I think, hard for the public to follow. For example, composition of the committee should be right at the beginning, should be right after the headings. It shouldn't be something you have to wait till the end of the second page to read, because if you're looking at this online, which I hope people would, they would say, oh, I could be part of that, because I could be one of the seven members. Oh, it's a town council standing committee that's only got three town councillors on it? Oh, well, then I'm not going to be part of that committee, and they can move on to the next charge. Simple things like that. But I did have a couple of substantive concerns associated with membership, and I don't know how much of that was assumptions based on what we might do, or was strongly felt commitments from the people who drafted this. I didn't see any reason at all to put a staff member on the committee, non-voting, voting completely doesn't make any sense to me, to have a staff member on the committee. Staff support should always be assigned by the town manager, but having an actual staff member, voting or non-voting, did not seem relevant at all. There's a good deal of confusion based on the way the references are set up in terms of who is doing the appointment. And I believe, based on all the accompanying material we received and what we heard tonight, that this is intended, as I would have hoped, as a standing committee of the town council. Therefore, as a standing committee of the town council, it's appointed by the town council, it's got nothing to do with town manager appointments. So that section would be removed, associated with that, assuming that we then have a conversation later about how town councillors are normally appointed by the president to town council standing committees. We haven't yet had a situation, as we will also have with our finance committee, where other members of that standing committee need to be appointed, one assumes, by the council, because the charter says we can appoint standing committees, it doesn't say, oh, anybody who's not a councillor gets appointed by the town manager. So therefore, I would, we would just want to clean that up. But if there are any particular, as I'm, you know, have this reoriented, if there are any particular rationales that people still feel strongly about in terms of having a staff member on the committee or having the town manager, or, there's also some wording in here that I think may simply be due to unfamiliarity with committee charges in our existing committee appointment handbook, that talk about electing a chair and a vice chair, we don't have to talk about that in this, that talk about serving for a three-year term, we don't talk about that. We do need to talk about if somebody thinks it's important, whether or not councillors themselves, the two of the nine, can serve as chair and vice chair, because that's called, seems to be addressed in here in a confusing fashion. And so I think we need to straighten some of those things out, so that once I have it in a different format, it would actually have the words in it you want to.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, Mandy Jo?
I'm going to build on what Alyssa just commented on, on a couple of things. I was also confused as to whether this was intended to be a standing committee of the council, appointed under 260, as it said, or a committee of the town in general. One of that confusions, I think, was the fact that I've always thought of committees of the council as having a majority of councillors on it, then residents on it, and this one does not yet. So, so I, I'm, I think we need to clarify which the intention is. Is it a committee similar to the cycling and refuse, or, you know, transportation committee, or these other committees that are town committees, or is it intended as a committee of the council? Membership-wise, I've agreed with most what everyone's said on membership. I think it's extremely important on a committee like this to have a representative from UMass. In reading all that we were given, given the fact that UMass's emissions represent approximately 42% of our total town's emissions, we're not going to be able to accomplish any goals we set without their complete cooperation. And so I know they have their own climate action plan, but if they don't meet theirs, we're likely not going to meet whatever we got, because they're half of our emissions. And so I think we need to relook at the membership portion. And then I, there were two parts of the charge that talked about the committee itself requesting funding for the committee's operation. And I wanted some background from the individuals who proposed it on what you had in mind when putting that particular issue into the charge. And then, you know, because I'm myself not familiar necessarily with any committees themselves actually formally having a mechanism to request funding for their operations, aside, outside of just the town manager doing it, most committees don't operate with funds specifically assigned to them, I don't believe. Someone correct me if I'm wrong. So I'd like to hear about that, because it is one thing that does concern me about the current charge.
One of the things that we would possibly be asking for funding for would be, and this is just possible, because we, it's possible also to get grant funding for some things, would be to write a climate action plan. It's possible that we would need a consultant to help with that, or, but it's also possible that it could get grant funded. So that's just one possibility.
Evan?
Evan? Thank you. Just to, to clarify, at least my personal vision, because as I read this, I could see maybe where you were confused, or you could get confused, is that it, it does sort of read as if the committee has its own working budget, perhaps, that it would request, which was not necessarily my thought. My thought was that there were actions that this committee may recommend that would require some type of appropriation from the town, and that it would have the authority to ask the town for that money. But I would not expect this committee to sort of come and say, here's our operating budget.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Steve?
Yeah, so I guess I saw this committee as being for 01002, as opposed to 01003, UMass, because I think UMass has its own sort of fully-formed approach to these exact issues. And I think by including them as, say, equal partners or whatever, as into our efforts, in a way, muddies the waters. Whereas I think that this should almost be, you know, almost outside of UMass, in fact, outside of maybe even the other educational institutions, how we can, you know, approach these problems, these, these very real problems. The other thing is the committee of the town council versus committee of the town is a confusing one. So I saw this as a committee of, of the town, never, never of the town council, but someone will have to explain to me exactly what the difference is.
Okay. Other questions? Pat?
Going back to Shalini's comment about intersectionality, et cetera, there are a couple of places that talk about environmental justice communities and reaching out to them, and I think that's important to look at. But that brings me to a question of membership of the council. We're talking about experts in, in all of these particular areas. I would like to see some people who are experts in how they are impacted by the, by the decisions of this committee, so that they're, they can be part of the collaborative process of reaching some kind of consensus to support the goals across the community and the costs across the community.
Other comments from the council? Okay. We are going to move to public comment. Could I see a show of hands of the number of people who would like to speak? One, two, three, four, five. All right? We'll go with the number five, and given that, we'll ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. I do want to say in advance of that, I do not hear from the council anybody who is opposed to moving forward in this direction. So the comments that we really need to hear from the audience are things that help us think about how to structure and move forward. You're looking at 13 people who I think are very anxious to see us move forward. So Russell? Vernon Jones? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I live at 17 Gaylord Street. I think we do all know that climate change is a big and important issue, and it's not an exaggeration to refer to it as the climate crisis or the climate emergency. However, it can be really difficult to keep our attention on how dire the situation is for the whole world, and even more difficult to think that we can do something truly significant about it. So we know the bad news is that climate change is threatening to make our planet uninhabitable by human civilization as we know it. The good news is that we can do something about it. And third, there are vitally important things that we can do locally if we don't delay and put barriers in the process. The recent report of the UN Intergovernmental Panel Climate on Climate Change, the IPCC, makes it clear that the problem is worse than many had believed, that we as humans have 12 years to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 45%. That's an immense task, but it is possible. People in many parts of the world are already seeing catastrophic storms, agricultural disruption and starvation, deadly wildfires, the spread of diseases, and increasingly deadly conflicts. The report says that unless we move quickly to get off using oil and gas to heat our buildings, fuel our businesses, make electricity, move people and goods, in only 22 years, we will be seeing worldwide food supplies affected, flooding of coastal cities, fierce storms and fires, and huge numbers of climate refugees, all seeking somewhere to live safely. This requires action everywhere. Every bit of emissions from everywhere in the world, including Amherst, makes the problem worse. Local action is particularly important right now in the United States, because the action at the federal level is all in the wrong direction. What I find exciting is that we can participate in solving what may be the biggest crisis ever faced by our species. There is so much to figure out about how to make our town carbon neutral. And you, as the council, will play a critical role, not just tonight, but in the, in the future. And forming this committee with what I think is an excellent charge as it stands is an indispensable... indispensable first step. Please do not delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional hands? Yes.
Hello. Is this all right? My name is Ayla Carter. I'm an Amherst native and currently a graduate student in Business and Public Policy Administration at UMass. I am strongly in favor of the formation of the Sustainability Committee and that its formation and actions not be delayed. This is both because it is in the town's interest to pursue sustainability initiatives in a more organized and efficient manner, and because it is in the interest of the citizens of Amherst and surrounding communities for the town to be a leader in sustainability. The committee's structure would be a considerable improvement over the way the town currently manages sustainability programs, and I'd like to illustrate for you why this is the case. Amherst is arguably better positioned than many other towns in the country to be a leader with respect to sustainability. We have a population that is both highly supportive of sustainability and willing to adjust their behavior to support green initiatives. Indeed, many town residents voted for their council members based on their positions on these issues. And crucially, our community has a greater density of scientists, engineers, policymakers, and activists who work on sustainability issues than almost anywhere else in the country. Amherst College, UMass, and Hampshire, and the individuals in their orbit give the town access to a nearly unrivaled body of experts and advocates who can help make these ambitious projects a practicable reality. I would argue that we have a moral obligation as a community to take full advantage of all these resources, to attempt to make innovative and meaningful progress with respect to sustainability and a committee structure that brought together elected officials and community members would certainly do so. UMass is home to the Northeast Climate Adaptation Science Center, a federally-supported organization. Their most recent conference at UMass, which I helped organize, drew over fifty practitioners and policymakers from around New England, while representatives from Boston, Burlington, Vermont, and Hartford, Connecticut were president, or present, sorry, representatives from Amherst were not. In addition, the schools are home to dozens of soon-run organizations, such as the UMass Environmental Community Outreach Club and a chapter of the Sunrise Movement, which happened to be founded by a UMass student, plus thousands of students like those doing graduate work in sustainability or public policy that are eager to engage in local sustainability projects. A committee's structure would be able to take better advantage of this untapped community resource. We need a dedicated committee to undertake all the good work that the town can and should be doing with respect to sustainability. Sustainability initiatives are wide-ranging and complex. They cut across traditional lines of town bureaucracy and require stewardship over years and decades. Work this complex and urgent requires more direct management and resources than the existing coordinator position is designed to provide. A committee such as the one being proposed will allow the town to efficiently manage its sustainability resources.
Thank you. I just would like to ask that, again, people speak to issues regarding the charge, the structure. Again, we're not here to be convinced, we are convinced. Additional speakers? Rudy.
May I have some of you as a time crunch?
No, you can have the lead.
Okay.
Okay.
Here, push. Does that do it?
Yep.
Hi, Rudy Perkins, District Two. I had other comments trying to convince you of the urgency of this, but I also try to speak more directly to what you've asked about. But I do want to talk a little bit about the direct impacts on our town of climate change, because I -- Oh, Angela Stan. Great, thank you. You know, obviously, our federal leaders have basically abandoned leadership on this, and our town and many other towns are going to have to act urgently to change the situation. And we're going to have to act, because this is going to directly affect our town, our kids, our grandkids. In terms of our energy supply now, it's, if you look at the Fourth Annual Climate Assessment that was just released, the chapter on the Northeast, one of the things they focus on is how vulnerable our energy system is to climate disruption now. We have an interconnected electricity grid, and with coming anticipated extra summer heat in the Northeast, it's going to put extra strain on our electrical systems in terms of air conditioning, water pumping and treating loads, and so on and so forth. Most of our energy, the report points out, most of our power is being generated by stations on the coast, and our fuel facilities are often on the coast in the Northeast. So the New York City, it comments that the New York City power plants are only sixteen feet above sea level in many cases, and the Sandy Storm Surge was fourteen feet. So when we talk about our town, we need to think about our own current energy vulnerability. Obviously, there's potential impact from climate refugees. We saw that with the 2017 climate-fueled hurricane in Puerto Rico and Maria. We had a lot of people coming to our valley that we had to scramble to take care of, who were climate refugees. Our local farms have crops rotting in the field from too much rain and so forth. So let me just talk a moment more about energy, because I think as we plan for net-zero buildings, for example, we have the opportunities to create better resilience for our communities. When I was doing some housing developments, I looked at the solar on our roofs that we were putting in, and wanted to go an extra step to find out how that solar could power the building during power outages. We should be looking at things like this. The charge specifically talks about microgrids. That's another defensive measure where we might be able to go off-grid with key municipal buildings. So I think a committee like this will be very useful in focusing the conversation, both to urgent achievement, and twelve years is not very long, urgent achievement of carbon neutrality, and then developing more resiliency in how we plan our capital projects, how we increase our ability to grow food locally and so forth. Those are important things that this committee could weave together. But I would suggest that this committee's focus stay on energy and climate, because I think if you add too many topics, it's not going to be able to achieve the sort of incisive, urgent work we need on climate change. So that's one point. And related to that, I think you need to have people who have expertise or commitment in this field as certainly the bulk of the committee. That's because you want to be able to get right up to speed right away and focus on what we need to do. There'll be plenty of opportunities for community forum and for community meetings to get input from other sectors and the wide variety of opinions and populations in our town. But I think that the core of the committee should be people who have expertise and experience in this area, so that they, there's no learning curve. We get right on this. So that's probably more than three minutes.
It is. Thank you very much. Please, this gentleman.
Hello, my name is John Root. I'm the chair of the Town of Amherst Recycling Refuge Management Committee. I've already spoken with three members of the town council, and I appreciate the commitment that all of you do have, and Andy was, as he mentioned, the liaison to our committee, and we received help through the years on a number of issues. Our major accomplishments, I think, are the Solid Waste Master Plan that Andy referred to, and while we did have a couple of bans, you know, the polystyrene and the plastic bag ban, another major, but that's important, but not that impactful, I would say, in terms of the total amount. But the other thing that we've done is we've been able to get the assistance through a grant and through matching funds of a town waste reduction enforcement coordinator. She's going to be leaving in about six months. So we used to have the support of a part-time waste, excuse me, recycling coordinator, Susan Waite. She's now with North Hampton full-time, and we have no one, we have no dedicated staff. So that was one of the items on our wish list, and I should say that that Solid Waste Master Plan was enthusiastically received by the Select Board, but it was not a document that had, that was a plan in the sense of, here's what we need to do first, then next. It was, these are some excellent, these are some ideas, which the Select Board agreed were all good ideas, but it stalled in the water. Nothing's happened since, and of course, forces beyond a lot of people's control, things have been in flux and that sort of thing. So I do want to share some concerns that members of our committee have in terms of what we would be able to do going forward. As you're aware, at this time, solid waste issues are not included in the charge of this committee. My concern about that is we have only four members at this time. We're supposed to have seven. That means that even to meet, all four of us have to get together. We've been doing virtually nothing, and it's very difficult to even get, and if even one of us leaves, then our committee is defunct, and that's likely to happen fairly soon. I don't see a way forward to attract new members, because the way we have always attracted members is by having a vibrant, you know, extent, a meeting, that people could come and visit and participate, and watch us work. So I don't see how, and I did meet twice with Darcy about, talking about these issues, and I, again, I'm really very deeply appreciative of the commitment of everyone here about these issues. So I, and one thing that we discussed as a possibility, if we weren't included, was, well, could we have some kind of a citizens' initiative that could get going, you know, that would be advisory just as much as a town committee? I don't know. I mean, that's a possibility, but I'm not real optimistic about that possibility. So I wish I could speak for much longer about these issues, but one thing I did want to mention, for example, is there's a DLTA grant that we were hoping, or I was hoping that the town would be able to apply for by January 11th, to get assistance from the Pliny Valley Planning Commission to create a zero-waste master plan. And by the way, zero waste is aspirational, but if you look at a truck going down the highway with refuse, almost all of that is recyclable or should be kept out. So we really could do a lot of things. We really could have pay per bag, pay as you throw, which would be suddenly a dramatic decrease, and other towns and municipalities have done this. So, and of course, the organics and the, so, all of these things, I have a concern, and other members of the committee as well, how can we, how can those issues be addressed if we're not part of the next committee?
Thank you. I believe we have one more comment? Yes.
Hi, my name is Lenore Brick. I live on Strong Street. I've been deleting and editing because, you know, so what's left? I appreciate your support. I didn't think I'd have to convince the 2019 Town Council of Amherst about this. That would be horrible. But I do urge you to think big. It's scary to think big when, because your job is so much in the weeds, in the details. But we have to think big, bigger than existing committees, 2050, 2035, those years were thrown out before the last IPCC report. And to understand the great opportunity we have in Amherst, as the young woman said here earlier, because of our book and plowshares town. We know about energy systems. We know they need to be updated and adapted, but what some of us don't know is that even if we stop all the emissions, that it's not enough, and that many scientists don't think carbon-neutral is enough, that carbon neutrality is not the goal, that carbon-negative is the goal. And to get to carbon-negative, we need to not just be dealing with energy efficiency and renewables, but we need to be taking that carbon out of the atmosphere and sinking it into the land and the water. And what do we have in Western Mass that they don't have in Eastern Mass? In Boston, we have more land. We have farmers, we have educators. We are in this unbelievable opportunity. You people here in this little town of Amherst, we can do something really big. We can be a model for the state, for the nation, and beyond. This is, this is like, this is it. This is the real deal. We live in this very unlucky time, but we're lucky to be able to do this. And you also might not be aware, you know we have a strong climate action coalition here, but we have a new committee on our climate action coalition, which is dedicated to terrestrial mitigation, to carbon sequestration, to soil regeneration, to regenerative agriculture, to food systems, because photosynthesis is the way that the Earth has been doing this for 4.5 billion years, until we got in the way. And so we have to take ancient systems and update the technology and update our will. And forest ecology, because trees are the unsung carbon-sequestering superheroes of our planet. And we can do this, we can bring all our resources. This team that we've just put together has been working with local, starting to work with local subject experts. We have scientists, we have professors, we have educators right in our midst. They don't have to necessarily be on the climate committee, but they of course can counsel, they of course can advise. But I totally agree with Rudy that that committee has to be, has to hit the ground running with expertise, so that we're not like, you know, just catching up to understand the problems. So I would like to offer to the committee and to the town council, this committee that we have just formed, we're in our infancy, but we have to grow fast, just like you guys are in your infancy, and have to grow fast. And I think that we can catch up together and use the resources we have in Amherst to do something really great together. So, thank you.
Thank you. One more?
But I felt like I was going on too much. Push. No? Okay, got it. Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to address some very particular issues that the council needs to consider in establishing this committee. The work of the committee will be overwhelming because of all the initiatives that are already in place. The zero-energy buildings are going to need to be monitored. Problems are going to come to this committee. The Community Choice Energy Project is a major initiative that is going to be coming before this committee, and a lot of the details will have to be worked out there before it comes to the council. And the municipal vulnerability planning will also, you know, these are things that are already going to be happening, we know of. There's going to be many other initiatives that will come from the committee. It needs to stay focused. And I urge the council to have this committee be the vehicle for presenting issues concerning our waste system, but to have a citizens' committee work out the details so that this committee can remain focused and move as swiftly as possible.
Let me move forward by attempting to just create a couple summary remarks. First of all, we want to recognize the extensive efforts that have already been made by the town and the expertise that resides there, as well as the expertise that resides on this council and in our community. Amherst has made some progress, but clearly not enough, and we have a long way to go. Things that have been raised specifically about this committee include its membership, and I have to say that we've gotten different messages on that, but we need to keep in mind how we coordinate, how we collaborate, and how we include other issues perhaps not mentioned at this point, including such as waste management. A second thing was to, the idea that we should expand, if you will, using the last speaker's, our second last speaker's role, think big. This is a huge commitment on the part of the council. And at the same time, council members have raised the specificity in the charge and wondered whether or not we need to have the charge be broader, but not as specific. At the same time, we've had questions raised about the format, the structure. Is it a committee of the council? Is it a standing committee? Is it a citizens' committee? Is it a combination? And we've had the issue raised about dollars, not just dollars for supporting the committee, including staff dollars, but also what kind of impact these kinds of initiatives have on individuals who live here in Amherst and do business here in Amherst. I have to say, that's a lot. And with that, I would like to suggest a motion, and I'm looking for somebody to make that motion. I'm going to go a little slower, and I've already had one council person suggest that in the future I would have a motion sheet, and we'll do that. The, this would be to refer the proposed Energy and Climate Resilience Committee charge to the Governance Organization and Legislation Committee, and ask that they, in consultation with the presenters of this draft charge, review the matter as expeditiously as possible and report on that progress, and if possible, return to the council on January 28th with a recommendation for action regarding this matter. So moved. Pat, and a second, Steve Schreiber.
Is there discussion?
I'm sorry? The, Pat, I, Pat made the initial motion. I have them written down for you, too. Is there any further conversation?
Is there discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I understand that some issues need to be resolved in finalizing the charge of this committee, but I think it could be done just with the people who devised it, and with Alyssa, and a few other people, because I'm just, there is no precedent for the other committees we have been forming, at least the other standing committees, to have it go before the new governance committee. And so I'm just thinking that that might be, it might be an unnecessary obstacle at this point, because I think that we aren't that far from having this charge in shape, ready to go for the next meeting.
Other comments? Cheryl?
I'd like to just add on to that and to say that I support that, and I really don't, I don't know that we want to set a precedent that this would go to another committee right away, so I would, I would agree with Councilor Pam.
Andy.
I think we have to look at what we expected as the charge for the governance committee, because the governance committee is really how we function, and our committee structure is integral to how we function, and therefore, it seems that this is very much in the realm of that committee. And furthermore, given the breadth of the discussion that has happened this evening, I think that we would be benefiting by having larger group participating, because I know, or at least I'm quite confident, I don't know, because I can never know, but I'm quite confident that the people who brought the first draft to us will continue to participate as it goes before the second committee. But that is why we created the committee.
Darcy?
I appreciate the intent of the motion, but I believe that the committee charge of the governance committee doesn't include reviewing committee charges.
The issue, let me just speak to this, okay? The issue, there's two, two or three issues here. One is around the substance, and one of the issues of the substance is one of the reasons why I made them, or suggested the motion I did, that include that this be done in consultation with you and Evan, okay? Because you really bring the substance, if you will. But many of the issues that have been raised, as I think Andy has just pointed out, are really much about our organization and our structure, and how we go forward. Is this a standing committee? What does a standing committee mean? And so therefore, the input of a group that is in fact charged to look at our governance, our structure, and our legislation is really the only committee I could see would be appropriate. Mandy Jo.
So the charge of the Governance Organization and Legislation Committee includes advising the council on matters of internal rules, governance, and organization, so the organization part would be standing committees. And to review bylaws and resolutions proposed for form, content, organization, sort of for the technical matter. Now, that technically doesn't include in that wording, standing committees, but there have been a number of technical issues, form issues and all of that, that were mentioned tonight that, about what has been proposed. So, you know, I guess my thought is, as we move forward, and we've talked about these committees that we formed, that their charges might have to change, too. And I think there might even be a request for one of the charges to already be amended coming up later tonight. But it makes the most sense to me to send a request to form a new subcommittee of the council to the committee that's charged with organizing, reviewing internal organization of the council.
Stephen?
So, as has been said before, we're building the airplane as we're flying it. So I think in a, in a more, next year, this would have gone to a committee first before being presented to the full council, I would assume. But as was introduced, I think when Councilor Demond presented this, she said that this was, you know, your first piece of legislation. So I think that by that concept alone, this is appropriate for referral to that committee. The soonest we can act on this anyway is the next council meeting. I think that the motion is in the spirit of voting on this at the next council meeting.
Maybe I volunteered for the wrong committee, but I don't, did not believe that that committee, the governance committee, was going to be the one that was going to be looking at our charges, because the people on that committee don't have any familiarity with our existing charges and how that might be done. And so I'm a little concerned about, I understand the substantive part of it, and how in a different reality, it might have gone to that committee first, from the standpoint of conforming with the other things we haven't created yet. But I'm not, well, I mean, obviously, I can send my edits to anybody I want, but I don't understand how I can accomplish a more global impact on the way charges are organized by suggesting it when we haven't yet even used our old charge form. So that confusion aside, I don't know if that means you want to just say that the people are getting together, that it's formally going to them, that I'm allowed to go talk to them, they're having a posted meeting, I presume, to do this. This is all very new. And the governance committee was not talked about in great detail, in terms of exactly what it would do, and I just am not clear. The other thing I wanted to ask about, completely on a side note, in terms of the substance that will be discussed by the original designers, is the line along, I'm sorry, I have so many tabs open here, I'm not sure where it is anymore, but the line that talks about, it's in one of the sections that says "shall," and it says "shall assist in educating staff." And that makes me very uneasy. I don't think that belongs there. And I think that that's the kind of thing where if staff said, "I would love if you would come with me to this thing," that would be entirely appropriate, or to say to the town manager, "Why haven't you let us talk to such and such people?" But having experienced a number of very highly functioning and very poorly functioning, as well as mediocre functioning committees, when you find people see a thing that says "shall" and says "shall educate town employees," they're real eager to go tell town employees what to do. And I don't think that was anybody's intention. I think it was just a cooperative effort.
Evan.
A couple of things. I do have some concerns. I think the intent of the motion would be to refer to committee with the hope that this would be returned to the council for a vote by our next meeting on the 28th. That would be three weeks. This committee technically hasn't been appointed yet. I mean, it will today, I think. But unlike, I think, the Station Road Bridge situation, where it was referred to the finance committee with the expectation that they come back on the 28th, we have had a finance committee before, and I think that that is a committee that could get up and running very quickly. The Governance Legislation and Organization Committee, I don't think will operate the same way. Alyssa, I'm gonna, it's gonna take me forever to get used to this first-name thing, I hate it. Alyssa, mention-
Sorry, I'm getting noticed that you're not being heard fully by our participants, so try and stay close to your microphone.
Thank you.
That's too loud. Is it? Okay, all right. So I think, you know, as Alyssa pointed out, the discussion of that committee ended with still some feelings of ambiguity. And so I think that that committee needs to be appointed, meet, figure out what it does, and how it operates, and what its procedures are, and how it decides when something is ready to be recommended back to the full council. To me, that is weeks' worth of work, if not more, of the committee just figuring out how it operates, and at what point does the committee say, "We've done our job," and we send it back to the council. Considering that the majority of the comments from the council, sorry, Siri, the majority of the comments from the council have been substantive, and I would assume those would need to be addressed first, because it doesn't make sense to address any form and structure changes until you have all the content down on your page. It doesn't seem reasonable to me that we could make the substantive changes to the charge, get it to a committee that hasn't even been appointed yet, have them meet, and send it back to us by the 28th. And so if we realistically want to vote on this on the 28th, I don't think we can send it to the committee. If, as a council, we are okay with delaying a vote on this until what I assume would be late in February, or perhaps March, then I think referring it to the committee is okay. But I personally don't think that three weeks is a reasonable timeline to do, make both substantive and structural changes if it has to go to this committee.
Andy.
I guess my concern is, is that if we send it back to the two people who drafted, and I appreciate both of your efforts, we're essentially creating you as a committee. And then we get into this whole question of how did that process take place? And for that reason, I have some hesitation, and I actually think that the governance committee can build the airplane as it's flying it by taking on this very issue, because I think it's going to go straight to the substantive discussion and get to the task at hand, and may learn about what airplane it needs to construct after it's done the first part of it.
Steve.
So our discussion tonight is a beta test of how this committee will work, and I think it's been very effective. So basically, five out of the 13 here will be that committee, and if that first conversation of this committee is what, similar to what happened tonight, I think we're, we'll be good. As a member of that, proposed member of that committee, I think, I'm completely confident that we can meet this January 28th deadline. Minus 48 hours.
Dorothy.
Well, I am most concerned about a precedent, which I think is being formed, and I think prematurely. I do not think that I would like to have a legislative and governance committee which functions here in this small 13-member council, like the Rules Committee in Washington, which becomes the boss of what happens. Nothing happens until it goes through that. And so it would be, in fact, that committee would become the chief executive committee of the council. And I don't think we need that structure. We're 13 people. I think we've been doing a good job of getting along and being reasonable. And I had, the way the charge, well, maybe I read it wrong, but when I read the charge for the governance committee, I thought, oh, they're going to be concerned with rules and with regulations, not with what comes up for a vote, or what the form it's going to be before it comes in a vote. So that's my concern. I, I do trust this committee, this council at this moment, to come together in a very speedy and efficient way to bring a good charge to us for our next meeting. I'm sure that that will happen. But I just want to say, I think that we've got to watch that we don't, in our effort to do that, rush into setting a precedent that perhaps we don't want to set.
Darcy.
Again, I also, I agree with Dorothy. I don't think this should be a precedent that we set of sending matters such as a committee charge to this committee. And I'm also concerned that Andy was saying that the committee would be dealing with the substance of the suggested changes, because that was also not the intent of this committee.
Andy, do you want to speak to that?
I wasn't referring to the substance, but I was referring very specifically to how you structure and word things. And where I think it, maybe the analogy is, is that when you get a bylaw proposal, you have to, in the end, make sure that it is appropriately worded, consistent with common practice of structuring bylaws, so this is clear and understandable. I would hope that this committee focuses on that aspect of it, and not what the specific intent is of the proposer. But I think we'll be in a very difficult position if we, as a council, are receiving proposed bylaws and other actions that have wording in them that have not been vetted through just common drafting, legislative drafting kinds of rules.
Mandy Jo.
So I have a comment, and then Kathy has requested to speak. I am concerned with Evan's seeming argument that the draft of the charge should not go through a technical review to a committee that we assigned for technical reviews of items that come to this council. I think that sets a bad precedent of avoiding and circumventing an exact structure we, three weeks ago, said we wanted, that, as Andy said, we wanted a group of counselors on this governance committee to review items for technical compliance with other bylaws, with our rules of structure, and with things like that. There have been a number of technical items that have been brought up tonight, as to whether it complies with things like the charter, what item under the charter it's being appointed under, things like that, our regular charge documents, and how we set out the charges, none of that, that's all technical. There's a number of technical things that I didn't even bring up tonight, because I figured it was going to someone that would be dealing with technical matters. To take an action tonight that says, yeah, there's technical actions, but we're just going to skip the committee that is charged with dealing with that, I think that's a really bad precedent for how we're going to deal with other bylaws that come, other resolutions that come, other charges that people might want to propose. I think we need to send this to that committee prior to it coming back here for a vote, whether that means the substantive issues need sent to an ad hoc committee that might include Evan and Darcy and maybe some other counselors, and then they send, after substantive changes, that charge on to, that proposed substantive changed, on to this governance committee for some technical look at it, to make it look like and comply with our regular charge documents. Maybe that's what we need to do, send it to two different committees, one in sort of succession, substantive review, then technical review after the substance has been changed based on our conversations tonight, and the goal being that it still come back on the 28th. I don't think there's a necessity that it needs to be delayed if we, as counselors, are going to, if we believe that this is that important, that it needs to be done that quickly, maybe we, as counselors, need to find the time in the next three weeks to make those two reviews happen.
Yeah, so I definitely, this has to be sent to somebody. This has to be sent to somebody for review. So the choice, do we send it back to the sponsors? I think that it's a decision of the whole council, and I think that the sponsors put the ball in play, but I think that the group that reviews it has to be larger than the two sponsors. And so we can make up a work group that includes the two sponsors and three other counselors, but we have that committee, which is called the Legislation Committee. Evan's on it, so we are guaranteed representative there. All the committee meeting members are on it, assuming that we approve it. Committee member meetings are open to everyone, so Darcy would be, of course, if she's not on it, welcome to attend. I don't see what the issue is. I think we need to trust, trust our instincts, and to me, this is exactly what should be happening, that this should be referred. The ball's been put in play, and now it should be sent to this group that we have created to review these kinds of things.
I forgot to call back and call on Kathy.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, Kathy.
Hi. I only partly heard what Steve was saying. His voice, among others, breaks up. I think he might have been saying what I was going to say, but can both Darcy and Evan be part of, whether we call it ad hoc, but talking about specific places where it's minor wording change to be compliant with some format? And so far as I can see, we don't have a common format yet. It keeps evolving, but at least so it makes sense to people. So is there something, rather than them just giving up a document that has a lot of content to it to somebody else, being part of ad hoc, a working group, to get changes in before it goes through some formal piece? And then my second question was, if we have, like, a specific sentence in it, or a place where we think it could be clearer, do we send those in as suggested edits or just questions? And who do we send them to? Do we send them to Darcy and Evan, just so they separately get people's reading comments on that? I'm not sure how we handle it as a process.
Okay, let me first address...
Ad hocness, and also just sending in specifics.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. First of all, let me go back to the charge as I read it, to the motion, excuse me, the motion. And that was to say that it go to this committee and ask that they, in consultation with the presenters, Evan is already appointed to that committee, Darcy would clearly be welcome. It's a public meeting, because it has to be a public meeting. And my concern is that there were some really seriously substantive issues about the format of this, is it a standing committee? Is it a citizens committee? What is it? And if we sit here as a full council on the 28th, and that hasn't been more thoroughly vetted by a smaller group of people, we will be sitting here trying to resolve some of those kinds of issues. And that's what subcommittees or standing committees are for. And I'm not looking for more structure than we already have, but I am looking for the most judicious use of the council's time and how we try to move things like this forward. So in terms of your second question, Kathy, I would assume that that committee and Darcy and Evan would win all of the possible comments they could get.
Someone mentioned, thank you, someone mentioned going with instinct, and my instinct is a little bit different than the way the motion is listed, or the way you're presenting it now, Lynn. It was in collaboration or with the, or in consultation with the presenters, yet we're talking about Darcy being a guest. She wouldn't be a guest. She's one of the presenters. I also think we could, Evan is on the committee, that we have issues around committee appointments, so we don't even know if the committee's going to make it through tonight. I hope it does. But I think that we could create very quickly an ad hoc committee with Darcy and Evan, and maybe one other person from the legislation, the legislative governance thing, so that we can get this done by the 28th. I think it's going to pass. You know, it seems a little bit wasteful of time to spend this much time on something that can be simplified right now.
I think the thing that we all have to sit with some level of discomfort over, especially me, obviously in this case, is that the five people who are appointed, which hasn't even been publicly announced, to an extremely short, extremely imprecise charge that I frankly never considered committee charges was included in, are going to be able to have a more productive conversation than the 13 of us are going to be able to have. And so if that committee had been in existence for two years, and this came up, and we sent it to them, then yeah, that would be so obvious. And so I don't want to mess up a new precedent either, but I understand people's level, including my own, of uneasiness with making it feel like some people are guests at a committee, and some people aren't really full participants, and when are they going to meet, and is that going to actually be a time that these petitioners can actually be there, et cetera, et cetera. So I understand why people are super confused, and I guess I'm encouraging us to not worry too much that at this very, if it does end up going to this committee, that this committee will not sit there and decide, "Oh, so shall we follow what Alyssa thinks a committee charge should look like, or what Brookline thinks a committee, let's just not do that? Let's just fix this thing," so that this thing can be ready. And reflecting back to something Steve said earlier, we can fly this plane this time, see how that goes. That'll teach us a lot about the process. But I would beg that we make sure that when that committee that hasn't formally been announced actually meets for the first time more than 48 hours from now, that they be really cautious to include the people who have said they need to be included, so that they meet at a time they can be there. And then just maybe it'll take one meeting and some email, and then it'll be ready for the 28th.
Okay. Call a question. It's a roll call vote, because we are in a situation with two counselors not actually in the room. So I'll have the town clerk call roll. You want to start with our two remote participants?
Counselor Shane? Counselor Shane?
If I understand what I'm voting on, I'm voting to, I just want to repeat what I think I'm voting on. I'm voting to include the two authors with a group that will fine-tune this wording-wise, and we all send them our comments. If that's what I'm voting on, I say yes.
Okay, I'm repeating the motion, okay? To refer the proposed Energy and Climate Resilience Committee charge to the Governance Organization and Legislation Committee, and ask that they, in consultation, we could also say in, including, with the presenters of this draft charge, review the matter as expeditiously as possible, and return to the council on January 28, 2019, with a recommendation for action regarding this matter.
Okay, with the amendment to say, "Including them," then I vote yes.
All right, so it's a friendly amendment, and it's going to say, "Including the presenters of this draft charge."
Counselor Baumill?
Yes, I would, yes.
Counselor DeAngelis?
No.
Counselor Dumont?
No.
Counselor Grismer?
Yes.
Counselor Hanke?
Yes.
Counselor Pam? Counselor Ross?
I abstain.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
No.
Counselor Brewer?
Yes.
So the vote is eight in favor, four opposed, one abstention.
Moving on, we still have a couple other items. The first of which is an action item discussed regarding multiple-member bodies, and it is to look at the charge for two committees. One is the Committee for the Resident Advisory Committee. Do I hear a motion? Remember, we have to have a motion and a second before we can discuss.
I move...
This is a motion to approve the charge for the Resident Advisory Committee.
I would, yes, I move that we approve the charge for the Resident Advisory Committee. Second.
Okay, did you get that? The second must you. Discussion, please.
I would be voting against this charge at this time. I do not feel it's at all clear, based on how open-meeting law works and on how advisory bodies to... It's a very long story, but based on how open-meeting law works, I don't see how this committee can function properly without some additional information. I wrote a ridiculously long email to the town manager today asking about that, and I believe we need some additional legal counsel. It does, it literally does not make sense with the way open-meeting law works, if we want it, depending on what we want it to do.
Okay. Mandy Jo.
So I had two comments, one of which actually relates to what Alyssa just said. The first one was the one-year terms. I think the charter might, depending on how this is considered, whether it's considered a multiple-member body or not, might require three-year staggered terms, not one-year terms. So we would need to figure that out. But number two is, under the authority, it says the charter, which is true, the charter requires the town manager to establish. Do we even have any authority to deal with this charge at all? Because the charter says the town manager is to establish this Resident Advisory Committee. Do we even have authority?
Thank you. The reason I put it in is because it was a committee that was called for in the charter, and since it's an item that was called for in the charter as opposed to an initiative of the town manager, I thought it was okay to bring it to you, but if the council says, "This is your committee, it advises you, you set it up, you determine how it gets carried forward," I totally would, could buy that. But in terms of being conservative in my interpretation of the charter, my sense was to bring it to the full council.
Thank you. Alyssa.
I'm extremely happy to have the town manager be very conservative on this field, because I agree that it is probably not within our purview to discuss this, except we need to figure out how charges work. And that was why he generously included this, and has done so throughout the last while, that there have been town manager appointments that have not necessarily required a charge to be approved by anyone, but it's more a matter of, does this make sense to everybody? And not that, it's more of a working-together cooperative thing, so that we can learn from each other in our charges, rather than because we actually literally have any say. One of the reasons I would prefer that the town manager not go forward with it as it is, without some additional clarification from our town attorney, is I want to be able to convince people to be part of it, understanding what their role can technically be. And I believe that unfortunately, the way it is written in the charter puts us in a difficult bind that way.
Okay. Mandy Jo.
So I actually just want to bring up a comment on behalf of the remote participants. They are repeatedly saying some of us are breaking up. I think it depends on whether we're close or far away from our mic.
Thank you.
So if everyone could try to stay close to the mic.
Thank you. Other comments? Pat.
Yes, I'm going to, I have two things to say. One, if this is a residence advisory committee, Mr. Baucham, I'm confused by we would, why we would limit it to three people, three residents, since the community is so complex. My other question is, the draft, it says committee charge. I think that we need to send this to the Legislative Governance Committee that's forming, because it is poorly written, and it's not clear whether we have authority from the charter or not. So what we did with the last charge should move forward with this, we should move forward in the same way with this one.
Do you want to make your statement as a motion? Pat?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Steve?
Well, there's a motion and a second on them.
I'll second it, you may...
I'm sorry, there is a motion and a second, so...
So we have to vote that out or withdraw that.
The motion and the second is to approve the charge. And let me call that question.
Well, the motion withdrawer could withdraw.
She can make the motion over that, please. Thank you.
I'm making a motion to refer the charge to the committee on governance and legislation.
Right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further conversation on that? All those in favor? We have to do a roll call vote, the two remote participants?
Yes, from Kathy.
Yes, Shalini.
Okay.
No.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Counselor Grismer?
Yes.
Counselor Hanke? Counselor Pam?
Yes.
Counselor Ross? Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
No.
Counselor Brewer?
Yes.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Yes.
The vote is 11 to 2.
Okay, thank you. We now move on to the coordinating, budget coordinating group. Again, this is a charge. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
A second?
Second.
Counselor Ross seconded it. Are there comments, questions? Yes, Alyssa.
I'm happy to go ahead and vote on it. This one is actually straightforward, but could we ensure that the Governance takes a look at modifying the actual document to make it look like the others that we're inventing as we go along?
Yes, so in other words, we would approve it, but refer it for formatting? I'm just trying to clarify what Alyssa said. Are there other comments?
I can amend my motion to stay what you just said.
Okay, so that we will approve it with future formatting change?
A referral to the Committee on Governance for formatting?
No, wait a minute, no. There's two questions here. One is, are we going to approve this? The second is, do we agree that it needs to have some additional formatting? And so the question is, do we feel we can approve it without that formatting change, and then have it formatted and brought back? and then have it formatted and brought back as information? Yes, Steve?
I think a motion that says I move to approve with a later referral to the Committee on Governance for formatting, would that serve the trick? No, you don't like that? Okay.
I'm looking at the town clerk and trying to figure out just how far afield we've moved. I'm sorry, I moved away from the mic. We're not appointing to this committee tonight. Right? We are not appointing to this committee tonight. Then I would suggest we refer. Yes.
I think, I just did confirmation, Kathy would like
Kathy?
To make a comment.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I'm fine with referring. I just have two comments that I know were, Lynn, that we're trying to clear up. We have two different kinds of committees in the charter. One is committees that are subcommittees of the council, and others are committees that have council members on them and others on it. And it's just, when we say it's a standing committee, they're different. So, when we refer to the Governance Committee, maybe we can clarify whether we should say Standing Committee of the Town, Standing Committee of the Council, or something to differentiate them because they are different in terms of their composition and their role in the town. So, I'm fine with referring it, but those were my two questions about the appointing authority and trying to define what kind of committee it is.
Right. And I believe that that's consistent with some other people's concerns.
Okay.
So, are there any other comments on this? The motion before us now is to refer this to the Governance Organization and Bylaw Committee. Yes, Mandy Jo?
The charge as written that we're likely to be referring, I believe, does not have a number of counselor representatives listed in there because the charge itself leaves it up, just leaves up the whole membership to the various bodies. So, I wonder, would that, if we leave it like that, would we then need another action to determine how many representatives? Do we want to put that number in the charge itself? Do we want to leave it as a separate action for a later time?
So, in other words, as you were saying, unlike other committee charges where we've designated the number of counselors, this does not designate? And do we want that to be in this charge, or at least convey that now as we send it for referral?
Well, when you appointed two people from the council to it, you could just add the number two in this charge.
That, those appointments are not going to go forward tonight.
Right, right. But that looked like a decision had been made.
I don't think I would have made that one up. So, somewhere along the line, I think I, we did say two, yes.
So, our Finance Committee charge refers to not more than two on BCG, but I don't believe we ever, as a council, decided whether we wanted non-Finance Committee members and how many onto the Budget Coordinating Group. But I believe that's probably why Lynn had potentially suggested Finance Committee membership for that committee.
Yes, Pat?
I'm gonna say that I'm a Pisces, which means I swim in two directions simultaneously. I feel like we're setting a precedent here that I'm getting more and more uncomfortable with. We have made decisions in the last three meetings about committees and charges and now everything seems to be being referred to the Governance Committee. What we've done previously is to make corrections and discuss whether we want two, or seven, or nine, or 15, or one. So, I'm a little hesitant to just say, "Let's refer this," because we could do that with everything tonight, and I'd get home earlier, but I don't think that would be a good job.
Right. I think, just to clarify, it does seem that there are other issues with this as to whether or not it's a standing committee, a standing committee, or what, or whatever. But the issue that was raised was the way that we wrote the Finance Committee charge. It has two people on this committee, but we never discussed in relationship to this committee whether or not there should be non-Finance Committee people on it, which we did do when we talked about JCPC. Steve, did you?
No. You've got a good presentation.
So, right now, based on the Finance Committee charge, there are two people from the Finance Committee that would be on this. Is there a desire for any other representation on this? I'm not hearing a preference from anybody. Mandy Jo?
I'll speak to it at least, since I brought it up. You know, I hadn't thought about it much before this committee, it's just before tonight and this conversation. But I think, given what this group is likely to be charged with doing and is what it is charged with in the charter, I don't know if there's a need for non-Finance Committee members to be on it. It's a group that coordinates sort of global budgeting guidelines, which is what our Finance Committee is charged, you know, in terms of budget, that's where they're charged. So, I'm not sure we have a need to have non-Finance Committee members on it.
Right.
I did think we should at least talk about it, though.
Are there other comments regarding the number of members on the committee being to finance or anyone else? Any other counselors, I mean. Personally, on my, my knowledge of what this committee deals with, it seems like the to finance people would be adequate. All right. So, we're, I'm, we would add that because it is already in one of our charges. Alyssa?
I guess I need a little bit of clarity. I'm trying to interpret what my notes say from the 17th, and it looks like we're mostly talking about two, and we're mostly talking about just all the things. In fact, you're quoted extensively in my notes, Ms. Hanke. But when we say Finance Committee, I think we need to be really specific. There are gonna be a bunch of Finance Committee members that aren't town counselors. So, we're not putting non-town, are we putting non-town counselor Finance Committee members on BCG? Or are we putting town council Finance Committee members on BCG?
It would be to town council.
That needs to be clear.
It would be to town council Finance Committee members. Okay. And that is basically dictated by the Finance Committee charge we already passed. Okay. So, that's not even really an amendment, it's just being clear. Now, the question before the committee is, do we refer this or do we approve it? Right now, the motion on the table is to approve. Approve. Alyssa?
I really, I do think I am sympathetic to the idea we're not referring everything, but literally, the titles are wrong. I mean, it's just, it's just bad formatting. So, the formatting just needs to be fixed, but the content doesn't need to be fixed. There are some slight content things that need to be dealt with in the Energy Committee. This doesn't have any content issue other than making sure it's clear on the two. It's just the word, the titles are wrong. So, I'm fine with even saying, "We approve it," but knowing that someday, governance is gonna fix it.
There might be some editorial pieces to it. Okay. So, the motion is on the table to approve. Is there any further discussion? Evan?
Would the motion also have to include that second part? Would this essentially be a contingent approval? No?
No. No, it would be a regular approval. And then, just understand that there are edits, and in fact, there's edits that have to be done on all of our charges. Even the ones that we have already passed. It's format issues. It's how do we regularly format everything we do, which I know is near and dear to your heart. Yes, Mandy Jo?
So, I, given that I think Evan and I are on this committee, so I think we're trying to figure out what you're gonna be asking us to do with this after we approve it. So, is, is the thing not to necessarily bring back in a week? The wording's all good, and, and the goal is at some point, we're gonna, this committee is probably going to come up with a standard format for charges, and when that happens, this is one that needs to come back? Is that?
That is...
Well, is that, well, all of them would be redone. Are they going to need reapproved at that time?
No. It's a standard formatting. It's not, it's not changing the intent or anything else. In fact, we could do it as a consensus vote. It has been observed by several people that the formatting of the different charges have been different, and we're trying... Alyssa and I have had a back-and-forth exchange on this very issue this week and looking at trying to come up with a standard format and, in fact, our style guide. Yes?
Yes. And along those lines, I really think that we can just not, I mean, I'm very dedicated to saying things like, "We voted on this on such and such a date, and that needs to be recorded on the charge." But this is not the kind of revision that changes the content of the vote. It's literally headings and discomposition up here at the beginning or at the end.
Right.
It is not changing any of the words.
Okay. Any further questions, clarification? Call the question? It has to be a roll call vote?
Counselor Baumel? Have we amended it to say that it has two?
It, it does now say, by virtue of it already being in a different charge for the Finance Committee, that it will have two town counselors from the Finance Committee appointed to this committee. From the town finance, town council, two town counselors from the town Finance Committee. I think so. Okay, we're ready for the call a question? The roll call vote?
Kathy says yes.
Shane?
Shalini, yes.
So, our two remote people have said yes.
Counselor Grisman?
Yes.
Counselor Hanke?
Yes.
Counselor Pam?
Yes.
Counselor Ross?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
Counselor Brewer?
Yes.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Yes.
Counselor Dumont?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay. Yes, we would like, there's been a request for a break, five minutes. Okay. Our next item is the Town Manager's Report. Is there a highlight or two that you'd like to share with us?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lynn. I know we're hitting the, we're almost at 10 o'clock, which is your witching hour.
We're past that.
There, yes. One major thing I'd like to note is things that had not been in, several things that I had in my list to mention were already mentioned. One thing I do want to mention is that our own Nancy Eddy will be recognized as one of, as the founder of the Massachusetts Municipal Association at the MMA Annual Meeting on January 18th. I would encourage us all, whoever's going to be there, to get to the opening session early, which I think starts at 9:30 or 9:45. Get there early because it's the most crowded session of the day, seating is at a premium that we, I'll try to get there early, and we can reserve some seats at the very front. She'll be seated in the front of the room. I think it'd be great for her to have a contingent of amorous folks sitting with her. Whether she, I don't know if she's gonna speak or anything, or if they're just gonna recognize her as being the very first president of the Mass Municipal Association, which is a really impressive feat. And she was featured, if you haven't, in tonight's packet, you have a, the Beacon, which is the newsletter, the monthly newsletter from the MMA, and there's a full page, page and a half article about Nancy in there, which is really great. Just a heads up in terms of what's coming up. At your next meeting on January 28th, among other, the other things that will be coming back to the council will be a presentation on the North Common Main Street Parking Lot Proposal that was last presented to the Select Board back in September or October. This will be presented to you as a first item, as a first look for you, so we can start the conversation about whether it's something you want to start to pursue or not. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Yep, that's it.
Thank you. And your report has some very other interesting highlights. We're moving on to, to a two-part thing on appointments. The first is the President's Appointments to Standing Committees. Those committees, in fact, have been approved. There are the Finance Committee, the Communications Outreach and Appointments Committee, and our Committee Appointments Committee, and the Governance Organization and Legislation Committee. The, I have included in your packet a memo, and it actually names the people to these committees. Just very quickly, Finance Committee are Andy Steinberg, Kathy Schoen, Lynn Greisman, Dorothy Pam, and Shalini Bellman. To the Communications Outreach and Appointments Committee is Alyssa Brewer, Sarah Schwartz, George Ryan, Evan Ross, Darcy Dumont. And to the Governance Organization and Legislation Committee, although some wish they had not have volunteered for this, we have Mandy Jo Hanke, Pat DeAngelis, George Ryan, Evan Ross, and Steve Schreiber. Can I also just say that this was done by my sending out a poll and asking people to express their first, second, and third choice? And some people have expressed that they would like to also be on the committee that has still not been named and described, nor a charge passed for it, and that will be one of the subjects at our retreat. This particular item does not require any action. I hope you're all happy with your appointments. Moving on. If you're not, you'll let me know. Believe me, I know that. Okay. The next item is, in fact, being removed from the agenda. That is the appointment of town council members to multiple member bodies. This became a question mark in some people's minds as to what was the appropriate role for the president of the council, and since this is a precedent-setting council, we, I decided to ask for a town attorney to review this in relationship to the charter. We have not received their advice yet and won't act on this until such time. So, 8B is not being acted on at this time. Any questions on that? All right. However, the town manager has provided us with a list of people to be confirmed for the count, for the Board of Licensed Commissioners. And let me just state, and Andy or Alyssa, you are certainly welcome to add to this, and that is, the charge for this committee, I believe, was approved in the past by the Select Board?
By this committee?
Yes.
By the council.
Right. Mr. Bauchman, would you like to speak to the appointments?
Yes. So, for the Board of Licensed Commissioners, the council approved the charge in, in December, December 17th, I believe it was. According to the charter, I am to refer to you the names of people who I desire to appoint as members of the Board of Licensed Commissioners, which I've done today. I've also simultaneously, as required by the charter, filed it with the town clerk's office. The five people I've referred to you is Douglas Slaughter, five Dwight Circle for a three-year term, Gaston Daley- term, Gaston De Los Reyes, 45 Canton Avenue, and Marion Walker, 106 North Whitney Street for a two-year term, Hallie Hughes of 30 Orchard Street, and Robert Paul Musgrave of 20 Rolling Green Drive for a one-year term. Two people for a one-year term.
The memo from the Town Manager does describe the process by which these people were applied and were appointed. Is there any question about that? This does require a motion to confirm by the council. If it does not, if we do not confirm, it, we have 30 days to confirm. And if we let that expire, it's automatic. Yes?
I move that we confirm the appointments recommended by the Town Manager.
Is there a second? DeAngelis, Pat DeAngelis seconded. Any comment? Mandy Jo.
I actually think we should refer this to our Appointments Committee, since we have an Appointments Committee that is supposed to review the multi-member body appointments made by the Town Manager. So, I actually move to refer to the Appointments Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And further discussion on that?
You can ask for it, but if you don't look up, then nobody can give any.
I'm sorry, Alyssa. Go ahead.
I know you have thousands of pieces of paper there. I would, much as I'm finding, refer a dirty word tonight, I assumed that was where we were going with this, because we actually don't know what that process of confirmation looks like. We know what the deadlines are in the Charter. We also could quite possibly not act on this at all and just let the clock run out. But the question is, but, under what circumstances might we choose to do that? And so, I would think that would be something that the Appointments Committee, that has just moment, moments ago been named, would try and figure out and bring back a recommended process, not only for these people, which maybe we would do faster than normal, perhaps, but also for future reference as to a process, under what conditions we let the clock run out, and under what conditions we move to positively approve or reject.
Okay. Yes?
So, doesn't this particular commission have some urgency? Because they, you know, if we delay this too long, we don't have a body that can approve the various licenses that are under their purview.
Paul?
I think in this particular circumstance, a motion to refer may not be appropriate.
Let me ask, Paul?
Thank you. There is time for it to be referred or to be given to a committee and come back by January 28th. I think the council would need to act by January, well, it should act by January 28th if it wants to take an action.
Mandy Jo.
So, we should not forget that this Bylaw Review Committee, by its charge, actually has five members. These are two of them. The other three will be Town Counselors.
We're not on Bylaw Review. We're on...
Oh, sorry. I'm looking at the wrong one.
Board of Licensed Commissioners.
Never mind then.
Never mind.
Okay. Yes, Alyssa.
Just following up, yes, it's true that there is actually, in the Charter, the list about 60 days for a Board of Licensed Commissioners. But, in the meantime, we still are within that 60 days. We still will be on the 28th. And in the meantime, we talked about this months ago, is that we are not holding up anyone who's applying for a license. The Town Manager has the authority to act on that in the meantime.
Right. Thank you for that clarification. In addition to that, I'm also aware that the Select Board went out of its way to approve as many licenses as it could possibly approve before they sunset. So, we want to thank them for that. So, the ref, the, the motion is to refer this to, to refer the appointments for the Board of Licensed Commissioners to the Communications Outreach and Committee Appointments Committee. And ask, they follow up with a recommendation to the Town Council. There was a second, a motion and a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further conversation?
Yeah, I just...
Yeah.
One quick question for the Town Manager, and that is, are there any applications that are for totally new licenses that will need to be acted upon in the next two weeks?
No.
Any other questions? Then call the question. It's a roll call vote.
Kathy votes yes.
Shalini, yes.
Counselor Hanke?
Yes.
Counselor Pam?
Yes.
Counselor Ross?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
She already, oh, Sarah? Counselor Schwartz?
Yes. Counselor Brewer?
Yes.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Yes.
Counselor Dumont?
Yes.
Counselor Grismer?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay. The issue of the Resident Advisory Committee Appointments is not going forward tonight. And we haven't accepted the charge anyway. And then the Human Resource Director is the next. And this is our first time to have the Town Manager come forward with an appointment, recommended appointment for a department head. The, and Mr. Bachman, would you please speak to Evelyn Rivera Riffenberg's appointment?
Yes. So, tonight, you've received, in accordance with the Charter, I've referred the appointment of Evelyn Rivera Riffenberg as the Human Resources Director. It was simultaneously filed with the Town Clerk, as required. Ms. Rivera Riffenberg is a high-quality, experienced Human Resources Director. She is currently the Director of Human Resources for the City of Chicopee and an adjunct professor at Bay Path University. She holds a master's degree in Communications and Information Management and is a certified Human Resources Professional. She was chosen based on her qualifications, as required. She had her, we're, we've completed a background check and the interview process, and everything came out. She's a very exceptional candidate, replacing a very exceptional current Human Resources Director, Deb Radway. I want to mention that our review process was led by Assistant Town Manager David Zomack and included Personnel Board Member Rebecca Woodland, who is also an Associate Professor of Educational Leadership at the University of Massachusetts, DPW Superintendent Guilford Maureen, Public Health Director Julie Fetterman, and Amherst College Chief Human Resources Officer Marie Judith Rodriguez. We received 26 applications. The committee offered interviews to six people. They recommended two, that I interviewed two, which I did, and I selected Ms. Rivera Riffenberg, and she has accepted the offer, subject to action or non-action by the council and background check, et cetera. Her resume is attached. It's been, her contact information, of course, is redacted. And I think there's enough information in here for the council to either refer, approve, or take no action.
So, let me just say, we have three options. One is to act, one way or the other, confirm or deny. Another one is to refer to a committee. And the fourth is to ignore it and let the clock run out for 14 days. Because if we don't take any action, it's automatic in 14 days. So, do I have a motion?
I'll move to confirm.
Okay. Is there a second? You moved...
I'll move to approve.
A second.
Any further conversation, discussion, questions? Dorothy?
I have a question. The resume looks very, very interesting. I'm just curious about the number of jobs in, like, six jobs in 12 years?
And what is your question?
Well, I guess, I think it just, it raises questions, that's all. But it may be that each job was better than the one before. I'm not sure.
When we explored that, that was not a concern to our interview team, our screening committee, or to me. And I, there's no commitment to us for how long she will be employed, nor a commitment to her to how long she will be employed here as well. So, we're not under contract or anything like that.
Any further conversation or questions? Yes, Liz?
So, one of the responsibilities of the new committee is to serve as the committee to review and advise the Town Council on all candidates forwarded by the Town Manager for employment as department heads. So, that's where that Charter piece comes in and also that referral piece alike we just used for the Board of Licensed Commissioners. However, given that we haven't met yet, we have no idea what the process is going to be, and that somebody's name is out there in public for a job, I am, without establishing precedent, I am leaning toward going ahead and approving this, rather than trying to let the clock run out when we don't have any kind of process for why we might decide to reject or why we might decide to let the clock run out. So, given the particular circumstances we're facing, I think it would not be unreasonable to not do the referral and to go ahead and do the approval.
Okay. Any other conversation? Yes, Evan.
I just wanted to, excuse me, agree with Alyssa. I think that we have a committee to go through this process. And so, I think it's, but, this is sort of an exceptional circumstance, especially, I believe, Ms. Radway's last day is January 19th, so before the council will meet again. And so, I think there's a number of circumstances that warrant us, warrant action tonight. But with, with sort of the acknowledgement that this is something that we will not do regularly and that it is because of exceptional circumstances.
I have only one correction to your statement. We're meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00. Yes, right. Is there any other question? Yes, George?
Just a question for Mr. Bachman. Do you feel that these are exceptional circumstances? And do you feel a need for haste on the part of the council?
Every department head is an exceptional person. I, I've always been uncomfortable with this provision of the Charter, because when you're hiring someone, extending an offer of employment, there's a lot of reasons for, a lot of times when someone can say, "No, I've changed my mind," their employer to make a counteroffer, the better, the quicker I, we wrap this up, get through all the steps that we need to get through in order to make a confirmed offer of employment, the better off we are. And this is an exceptional personal, person, I think, that will really serve the town well.
Other comments, questions? Motion on the floor is to approve the appointment of Evelyn Rivera Riffenberg to the position of Human Resource Director for the Town of Amherst. Call the question. It's a roll call vote.
Kathy votes yes.
Counselor Baumel?
Yes.
Counselor Pam?
Yes.
Counselor Ross?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
Counselor Brewer?
Yes.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Yes.
Counselor Dumont?
Yes.
Counselor Grismer?
Yes.
Counselor Hanke?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Standing. Okay, we're moving on to approval of minutes. And we have three sets of minutes, December 3rd, which has been before you, oh, I'm sorry, I missed one thing. It's council appointments, and it's to the Bylaw Review Committee. And although we are not appointing anybody else to that committee at this time, I just want to mention that I have been in touch with all three members of the previous Bylaw Review Committee, and of those, Robert Ritchie and Bernard Kubiak have agreed to continue to serve. The other members will be appointed once we clarify the appointing authority. Yes?
I'm going to move to table this until the next meeting or until the time we are ready to appoint the council members. The minute we appoint members to this committee, the former committee is dissolved and does not exist. And if we appoint these two members at a different time than the three members from the council, we haven't appointed a committee that cannot meet because it won't have a quorum of appointments. So, I think we should do the two at the same time.
Okay. They, there's a motion to table. Any further conversation? All is in favor? Roll call.
Hi.
Yes.
Counselor Ross?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Did I hear Counselor Shane?
Yes, you did, yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
Counselor Brewer?
Yes.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Yes.
Counselor Dumont?
Yes.
Counselor Grismer?
Yes.
Counselor Hanke?
Yes.
Counselor Pam?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay. All right, now we're moving on to approval of minutes. The first set of minutes are December 3rd. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, moved.
A second? Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Schreiber and a second by, no, by Pat DeAngelis. Alyssa? Discussion?
I have, I have a format issue.
Okay.
What a surprise. What, which is that even if no one's absent, please list counselors present, counselors absent, none, as opposed to just leaving that off. And it would also be helpful if we listed us by last name alphabetically, unless, of course, we decide to go by first name alphabetically, whatever. I find it very confusing to try and go through a long list of names that has no apparent rhyme or reason to it. So, that might be helpful to others, but specifically, I would like it to say, members absent, even when there are none.
Okay. Anything else? There's a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear any other questions? Call the question. It's a roll call vote. For December 3rd, yes.
Counselor Baumel?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Ross?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
Counselor Brewer? Counselor DeAngelis?
Yes.
Counselor Dumont?
Abstain.
Counselor Grismer?
Yes.
Counselor Hanke?
Yes.
And Counselor Pam, sir?
Yes.
It's 11-3.
The vote is 11 in favor, two abstentions.
Thank you. We're moving on to the minutes for the Saturday, December 8th meeting, which was the Amherst, at the Amherst Palm Regional School Library. It was the four towns meeting. We called a meeting because there were going to be more than seven of us, there were going to be seven or more of us there. Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion to approve? Oh, okay.
I move to approve.
I'll second. What is going on? Okay. Any further questions?
There's like, somebody in uniform that wants to be let in? They got locked out. Okay.
Thank you. They probably wonder who's broken into Town Hall at this hour. All right. All right. Is there a discussion of these minutes? I want to point out that probably the only people who should be able to vote on this are the people who were present. So, we'll need a roll call vote, but we should go by the names of the people that are on here.
The others should just formally abstain.
Abstain. I thank you. Call the question. You're allowed to vote even if you're not there? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Shane?
Yes, approve.
Counselor Baumel? Counselor Ryan?
Abstain.
Counselor Schreiber?
Abstain.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
Abstain.
Counselor Brewer?
Abstain.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Abstain.
Counselor Dumont? Counselor Grismer?
Yes.
Counselor Hanke?
Abstain.
Counselor Pam?
Yes.
Counselor Ross? Six in favor and seven abstentions.
So, that doesn't pass.
It does. It passed, it doesn't pass.
It does pass? Okay. All right. Moving on to the minutes for December 10th. Do I hear a motion to approve? George, thank you. Second. Steve Schreiber, second.
I just have one thing.
I'm sorry. Darcy?
Minutes aren't in the packet.
They were on the point -- SharePoint.
They should be in the packet, though, right?
They are. If you go online, they are.
They're in the electronic packet.
Are you on the second page of packet materials?
Never mind.
Was that you throwing rocks?
Is that just public comment?
Okay.
Is there anything else from -- yes. Yes.
That was one of the things I seen as a cop.
She was wondering what you were doing, standing out there. Okay. Mandy, Joe?
Kathy had sent you potential comments for these minutes. I missed them for the December 3rd one. But for the December 10th one, she indicated that she thought Darcy had recommended the change to the start time from 7:00 to 6:30, not you as president. And she wasn't sure who seconded, and she figured it wasn't me since I didn't support it. So, we might want to make sure we have who moved to change the start time and who seconded it correct.
It was definitely Darcy.
You moved to -- it was Darcy that moved it.
Yes, it was I.
And I very well could have seconded it.
I can take credit for that great idea.
I'll let Steve take credit for that great idea.
Let's refer to the governance committee.
Okay. Steve seconded it. Are there other changes? Other questions? Call the question. It's a roll call vote.
Counselor Shane?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Baumel? Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
Counselor Brewer?
Abstain.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Yes.
Counselor Dumont?
Abstain.
Counselor Grismer?
Yes.
Counselor Hanke?
Yes.
Counselor Pam?
Yes.
Counselor Ross?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan? It's 11 in favor and two abstentions.
Okay. We're moving on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports from the council? Seeing none, we're moving on to public comment.
There are some ruffians throwing rocks at the window.
We've had a small disruption this evening. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a public comment? Thank you.
My name is -- who's this? Meg Gage, District 1, and I was a member of the Charter Commission. I want to make three really brief comments that are sort of tips into a much larger conversation. There's several things. The charter, I'm really impressed with how the council's starting with the huge amount of work that the staff has done, and particularly the town manager and all that you've done and the paying attention. I guess I'd like the metaphor, flying a plane while building it. I'd rather think of it as a train, but a little safer. There are some things in the charter, though, that are -- make your job challenging. I say this not as a critique of the charter or the Charter Commission, but I know Mandy and I both have lists of things that we wish were a little different. So, I'd like to come to the Rules and Procedures Committee and suggest some of the things that you might be aware of, so that you develop a group culture and practice that helps ameliorate some of these challenges. To give you only one example, how do you recruit people, good people, to really important committees when they won't have a vote? I think there are ways to do it, but I think it's a challenge. There are several things like that. And I think it's hard to just encourage us all to be having the conversations so that we keep going on such a strong footing. I also am really excited about the energy that's gone. I'm still out of breath from running around in the cold. Anyway, a little adventure. Terrific energy that's gone into thinking about citizen participation and recruiting people for committees. And the council, the Charter Commission cared a lot about that with the community involvement officer and the Resident Advisory Committee and so on, and other things in the charter. I really urge everyone who's working on recruitment to think not just about how do we get diverse people, but putting -- but setting up a kind of infrastructure for outreach so that it's ongoing, not just dependent on a few people making a lot of phone calls all the time, but creating outreach infrastructure so that we're always finding new people. And the incredible talent of the council, including a lot of people who haven't been that involved, is just an indication of how many great people are out there wanting to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Meg. No other public comment at this time? Okay. We have a couple of meetings coming up, the first of which is tomorrow morning at 9:00. And then on the January 15th, January 16th, and our retreat on February 2nd. In addition to that, we have a regular council meeting, although all of those will be, in fact, open meetings, on January 28th at 6:30. Is there any council comments at this time? Mandy, Joe?
I just want to do a shout out to both Kathy and Shalini, who have made extraordinary efforts to actually attend and be here for this entire meeting. And I just saw Shalini pop up a finger, so I think she might want to make a comment, too.
Okay. Shalini?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, actually, to Mandy Jo, for being here, present to our comments and participating. Then also shout out to the technology people who made it possible for us to participate. And it was fairly smooth. I could hear everything and participate. So, thank you.
I want to just second that and thank the technology people. And especially after you went over to that little closet and changed some knobs, and all of a sudden, we could hear people from miles away. So, and also, Mandy Jo, thank you for managing that. Alyssa?
Quickly, on a completely different topic. On our agenda, which currently is, says, you know, committee reports under Item 10, which I know there weren't any of, but taking a page from a former body I was part of, it would be a good idea to go ahead, and the town manager will know what I'm talking about, have an attachment that shows what possible committee reports might happen. Because otherwise, you start to get people who are like, "Well, I didn't know you were going to talk about Bylaw Review that night." It's like, you know what? We might talk about it every single night, or we might not. And -- but you don't clutter up this page, you just add it as an attachment.
I'm adding that to my 17-page script for tonight. Thank you.
But it should appear in the -- it should appear attached to the list of -- well, attached to the agenda when it gets uploaded, not to the SharePoint, but for the public, so they can see that.
Okay. Thank you for that suggestion. Any other comments? Yes, Dorothy?
This is to our town manager. Tomorrow morning, we come and meet, I assume, in this room. But I know my granddaughter's very excited about the fact that she thinks she's going to get a snow day tomorrow. So, I want to know, do you have snow days here at town hall? And what are the provisions?
Very occasionally. We do, we'll send out an alert that says there's -- that building is closed. It's not like a school is closing now. So, generally, we're open for business. The meeting will go forward, and we hope everybody will get here safely.
No.
No.
But there's a few shops down the street that might be able to accommodate you. Anything else at this point for comments? Topic's not reasonably anticipated. Hearing none. Executive session, we're not. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Steve says yes.
I rise in acclamation.
And second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call?
No. I rise in acclamation.
I want to do the -- would you ask the two people if we can adjourn?
Is that affirmative, Counselor Shane, Counselor Baumel?
Yes. Shalini, yes.
Yes, yes.
And the rest of us said yes.